Board of Education meeting is called to order. For the safety of all those in attendance, display of signs or banners will not be permitted. In addition, masks are required to be worn during the meeting except when speaking at the presenters podium. Tonight's meeting is a meeting of the board and held in public, not a public hearing or discussion with the board. Patrons will be invited to share comments as part of the public comment portion of the meeting as outlined in Board Policy BC DI. That time is set aside on the board's agenda for members of the public to share their thoughts. It's not a time for dialogue with or question and answer session with the board. If your comments require follow-up from the board or district staff, that will occur after tonight's meeting. The district assumes no responsibility and/or liability for the information shared during public commentary. The views expressed are solely those of the speakers and do not necessarily reflect the views of the Lawrence Public Schools. Please be respectful of the presenters and the board as we discuss and deliberate on the issues and topics on tonight's agenda. Comments or actions that are disrespectful of presenters or disruptive of the board's discussion and deliberations, use of foul language or threats to the board or others in attendance will result in immediate removal from the meeting. In addition, USD 497 provides public access to our board meetings through live streaming. The platform used for this live streaming has acceptable use rules for its content on its site. While the district does not delete or hide board meeting videos, the streaming platform may elect to do so if the content of the public comment or any other portion of the meeting is found to violate the platform's acceptable use rules. Thank you for your cooperation in these areas. At this time, a motion will be in order to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion?
This is Kay. I approve the, well, I approve the minutes, motion for the minutes.
Okay. Do you have a second?
This is Carol. I second.
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Newsbaum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.
It's a special recognition. We will hear from Dr. Lewis and then Shannon Kimball will provide some comments for the retirements.
Thank you, Board President Hill. Good evening, everyone in attendance and those that are watching. At this time of year, we normally have numerous recognitions and awards for both students and staff, honors and additional awards. And so tonight, we have representatives from three schools, three of our schools, with us that will recognize some very impressive honors, awards, and even some national recognitions. And so first, I would like to invite Free State Theater Director Brian Percival to introduce his students and share the information about the honors that were earned by our Firebird Thespians.
Can y'all hear me okay? Back in January, we took 15 Free State Thespians to the Kansas Thesbian Festival at the Hyatt in Century Two down in Wichita. We competed in numerous events and we have some honors that we would like to recognize for those. We received four superior ratings for our Thespies or Thespian Excellence Awards. We have Mary Green's solo musical, Julia Ruddy's solo musical, Beckett Hutchinson's solo monologue, and Mary-Kate Schultz's playwriting. And then Mary-Kate Schultz received the Kansas Thespians Playwriting Award for Larry Shue. Larry Shue was a playwright that was born in Kansas, and Kansas Thespians has an award that is recognized for him. And then our improv team, which a few of our team representatives are here for tonight, made it to the final rounds amongst nine teams in the state of Kansas and placed in that top nine. The students that qualified are over here at the chairs. If you would like to stand up. These are our four superior ratings, and three of these four students also participated in improv, and all four of them qualified to compete at the International Thesbian Festival this summer in Bloomington, Indiana.
Congratulations.
Any of the scholars like to make any remarks?
I can say this. Hi, I'm Mary-Kate. I'm the president of the Thesbian Club and the improv team. Thank you guys so much for this recognition. It means a lot, I know. It means a lot to be recognized by the community, and theater and arts have such an importance in our schools, and it's really cool to see that recognized. And yeah, we're really happy for all that we've accomplished.
Thank you so much. And if you haven't seen a play at Free State or any of our high schools, middle schools, you're missing out on a treat. Top-notch everything, from, you know, the set, the design, the performances, just Broadway-ready. So congratulations to our Free State Thespians. Next, Sunset Hill Principal Jeremy Philip will honor our award-winning staff member I told you a little bit about at our last meeting. Mr. Philip.
And I am not Broadway-ready. Good evening, Board members, Dr. Lewis. My name is Jeremy Philip, and I'm the principal at Sunset Hill Elementary, and it is my honor and privilege to be able to introduce in the flesh this year's Kansas School Counselor of the Year, Amanda Atkins, or as she's known at Sunset Hill, Miss Lady Bug. We are just really, really excited to celebrate and recognize basically what we get to see every day with Miss Lady Bug. She is an incredible part of our family, and just one of the things that she does is make sure that every student knows that there's an adult that truly cares for them. She supports our students, their families, and the staff. And so the state finally saw what we knew, which is that she is the number-one counselor out there. Part of her honors, she will get to attend a national conference representing Kansas. And then also, she'll be heading to Washington, D.C. next February, also to represent Kansas as our Kansas State Counselor of the Year. So, Miss Lady Bug, would you like to say anything?
Yes. So excited to be here, really excited to get this recognition as well, looking forward to representing Kansas and Lawrence Public Schools, and talking about the good stuff happening here. I really appreciate my principal, Jeremy Philip. He is such a supportive principal, and Jose Cornejo, who really helps support all the school counselors. And it is a team effort, and I love where I'm at, and I love the school I'm at, and I love doing what I'm doing. And I'm, side note, Miss Lady Bug, because I'm the lady you can talk to if something is bugging you. So that's why I'm Miss Lady Bug. So thank you, everybody. I'm happy to be here.
What a huge honor to have the Kansas School Counselor of the Year right here in Lawrence. And I think this is the first ever, do we verify if this is the first ever for Lawrence Public Schools? I think so. So that is truly remarkable, and I'm glad that the state has taken note, and now entire country will take note by next February in Washington, D.C. So congratulations, Miss Lady Bug. And finally, Lawrence High School Principal Jessica Bassett joins us to recognize Students and Staff Journalism Honors. Ms. Bassett.
Good evening, Board members and Dr. Lewis and the community. It is with great pleasure that I have the opportunity to introduce or present, really, Barbara Tholen, our Journalism and Graphic Design teacher here at Lawrence High School. Barb, as she is affectionately called, was chosen as one of the seven-member class of 2022 Kansas Master Teachers. Barbara spent 10 years working as a reporter for the Kansas City Star and Topeka Capital Journal before she made the switch to the classroom and began her career at Lawrence High School in 2010. When we asked Barb to describe what she described as her mission as a journalism teacher, she says, "I want my students to ask touch questions, think critically, and vigorously protect their First Amendment rights." She describes her proudest moments, not just when her students are recognized, but also when they take on the challenging work. Lawrence High is grateful to have such a passionate teacher who is student-focused and who is working to develop the next generation of journalists. So it's with great pleasure that I asked you to help me celebrate Barbara "Barb" Tholen, Kansas Master Teacher.
I have a few things to go through because we have a couple of awards that we thought we would celebrate altogether. But, so, a couple of short speeches. So I guess, first of all, I just want to say my students make me look good, and we'll talk a little bit more about that why in just a second. But I love what I do because of them. I marvel at their drive and their determination, and I try to learn the lessons that they teach me. Really, every teacher should be so lucky to have students who inspire, encourage them like mine have done. Mostly, I want to say that I work in a school full of masterful teachers. My colleagues at Lawrence High are dedicated to their craft, they're dedicated to our students, and if I am a Kansas Master Teacher, I surely work in a building full of master teachers. Finally, I've been lucky to have been inspired by wonderful teachers throughout my life. I have just a long list of excellent educators that I've encountered. But it begins with my parents, my mom and my dad. My mom's here tonight. My children, Ben and Edie. Edie's here tonight. They teach me new things every day. And I always appreciate the support of my husband, Phil, who's also here. I finally, and she's not here tonight, but my dear friend Lori Folsom, who teaches at Free State High School, you know, proving that rivalries can include friendships too. But I can certainly say that Lori makes me better every day, so thank you. Now, let's talk about other things. Are we good? Just jump right into it. So we had, we've had kind of a string of good things happening for us. So first off, Kenna and Kate, if you could come out. These, we wanted to celebrate our students winning the yearbook or being Pacemaker finalists for the yearbook. The journalism staff last year produced such an exceptional yearbook that it was one of just 58 high schools in the country to be named a Pacemaker finalist. The Pacemaker is the preeminent award of the National Scholastic Press Association, and students will be recognized for that honor in April in L.A. In the past five years, Lawrence High has been a Pacemaker finalist or winner three times for the yearbook and three times for the newspaper. It's an honor to reach that bar in the best of times, and our students persevered last year to create a book that told a broad story of our students' experiences, whether they were regularly at school for classes and sports, or they were solely logging in from their bedrooms. This was largely due to the exceptional work of our 2021 editors-in-chief, Kenna McNally and Sophia Kaufman. This is Kenna. Sophia, couldn't it be here today? Both of those students finished the 2020 yearbook as well before taking on that even more challenging yearbook in 2021, and they really knocked it out of the park. During constantly shifting plans, game schedules, all the struggles we faced last year, they were my rocks, and I can't thank them enough. Kenna's here tonight with Kate O'Keefe, who also helped make that 2021 yearbook a reality. And I'm really, really lucky that these two lovely students are both editors of our 2022 yearbook, and I know that they're continuing to set that bar exceptionally high, so I thank them for that. And Kenna, I think, might say something. If you want.
I don't really have anything to say.
Okay. Kenna's going to say it in the yearbook. Okay, we're good.
Buy your yearbooks.
Buy your yearbook. Okay. Kyler, come on up. Okay, number three, last but not least. Kyler, this is Kyler Dunn. Kyler Dunn received the state's top individual honor for scholastic journalism as the Kansas Student Journalist of the Year. In his portfolio for this application, Kyler had to explore and reflect upon all aspects of his work in journalism, from his writing to his leadership abilities. It's a massive undertaking. That portfolio will be moving on to the national competition. He's our state's nominee for the National Student Journalist of the Year. Here's a little bit of what I wrote about Kyler in my letter of recommendation. I said, "How can I begin to explain just how unique and extraordinary Kyler Dunn is? How can I fully let you know how it's not just this amazingly talented journalist, that his leadership skills blow me away on a daily basis, that the newspaper published this year because of Kyler's sheer determination to put everyone on his back and carry them across the finish line, and that he pulled this exhausted advisor out of my pandemic malaise and reignited my enthusiasm for student journalism?" Kyler's work as co-editor-in-chief began this summer, when, without my asking, he took the initiative to cover a school board meeting. He attended camp, he taught students in-person reporting skills, he encouraged new students to step into more challenging roles. And maybe we can see our lovely Jack over there, who, by the way, I have never, like, this is the type of job I have, I never ask Jack to, like, live tweet a school board meeting. He just does it. Like, what other teacher has that happen? Okay, so Kyler encouraged new students to step into the challenging roles. His reporting never shies away from tough topics. He is deserving, truly, of the Kansas Student Journalist of the Year recognition. Thank you, Kyler.
I have a little thing I wrote. There are lots of people that, in some way, have helped this happen, obviously my parents and a ton of other people who are influential in my life. But specifically, I'll start with Mrs. Tholen, or Barb, as we refer to her more often. Barb has shaped me into the student journalist and the person that I am today. None of this portfolio would have been possible without her four years of leadership and support and perseverance. I mean, there were times where I couldn't fit a journalism class into my schedule, or I had to fulfill my staff duties in a different class in Barb's classroom, but throughout it all, she was making sure I was in that room and doing that journalism work. And without that perseverance, I probably would not be where I am today at all. And all of that talent and passion is clearly demonstrated by her own award. Also, of course, I need to thank my staff and co-editors. A few of them are here today. Everything I put into that submission, that portfolio, was a group effort. Every single story, every single graphic, and every editorial decision would have been impossible without the dedication of my staff and the creativity, leadership, and hard work shown by my fellow co-editors. I mean, this is a great example. Jack's been at basically every school board meeting. So anything I put out about school board meeting, I'm talking to Jack about information that he's gathered. I couldn't have done it all myself. Final thought, I'll leave with everybody. Journalism is really important at all levels, especially during difficult times, both locally and nationally and internationally right now. We're facing a lot of difficult issues. My challenge to everybody, read, listen, and discuss. It's more important now than ever. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tholen, and your amazing scholars. If you haven't read the budget, I think a lot of times, other news outlets, local and throughout the state, depend on the budget. And you're right about Jack. He's been at every school board meeting, every subcommittee meeting, and he's on my superintendent advisory council, and we just met, and he told me that he's like the point of contact in the school for anything related to budget conversation. So that's a true testament to the work that you do as an educator, Ms. Tholen, so we really appreciate you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. I have three retirements to recognize this evening. First, congratulations to Rita Byer on your retirement. Please accept the board's heartfelt thanks for your 21 years of service and devotion to this community and its schools. In addition, congratulations to Brenda Waite on your retirement. Please accept the board's heartfelt thanks for your 11 years of service and devotion to this community and its schools. And finally, I want to recognize Myron Graber on your retirement. Please accept the board's heartfelt thanks for your seven years of service and devotion to USD 497 and its schools, and your 47 years of service to public education.
Thank you, Shannon. Next is a superintendent's report. Dr. Lewis?
Awesome. Really excited to hear about the work from our district administrators to guide and support our building principles in the report that you will hear momentarily as we continue to work our strategic plan. And so the Data Informed Decisions Report, I'm really excited about that, and I think you will be as well with some of the data that's shared there. I don't have my clicker. Oh, yes, I do. Okay. So this is the timeline that our executive leadership team, thanks to Patrick Kelly, crafted that will allow us an opportunity to kind of look at some of those proposals and requests to have and requests to have recommended lists of cuts from building and district administrators. So we've involved our building principals, will continue to involve those building and district administrators at the direction of the board as we look at those prioritized cuts, again, to cause the least harm to students. And we'll try to get this, if it's not already posted, posted to our website. KSB research report released on Friday shows a statewide enrollment decline of about 3.4% between 2019 and the 2020 school years. It also suggests that Kansas public schools can expect enrollments statewide to continue to decline from about 0.4% to 1.4% each year for the next five years, with a cumulative decrease over the next five years of about 5.2%. The report looked at decreases in the number of students, I'm sorry, the number of children born in Kansas each year, as well as historical public school enrollment and retention of students from one grade to the next. I am pleased to acknowledge the exceptional leadership that has been shown by these two individuals, Kathy Branson over at West Middle School, Rebecca Weaver at Cooley Elementary School. They have been serving as interim principals. On the personnel report, we are looking to make the recommendation to remove the interim title due to their exceptional leadership in those two buildings. So reminders, Tuesday is the deadline for staff retiring under the post-employment contributions. This is our early retirement plan. This is the deadline to submit retirement notifications to HR. The district is currently engaging the Free State High School community in a survey about the principal search. We also have invited interested students, staff, and parents to apply to serve on the interview advisory committees. Congratulations to all of our student musicians and singers who participated last week in the Kansas Music Educators Association Convention. I know that, based on our talent, Lawrence was very well represented. Free State Rassling Team has added two more 6A state titles to their records last year. Congratulations to Free State High School wrestlers, including state champion Madison Gray, Nolan Bradley, and Matthew Markham. As many of you have seen in the community, our numbers are continuing to decline with the current average daily count of about 27. It's our 14-day moving average, and that's down about 11. Also, our number of current cases is at 776, down from 181. So again, I would encourage folks, typically when we see these declines, we kind of let up on our mitigation strategy, so I would encourage you to continue to practice those mitigation strategies. As you know, Douglas County's health order requiring masks be worn indoors in public places is scheduled to expire this Wednesday, March the 2nd, unless the Douglas County Commission chooses to extend this. Additionally, the CDC released on Friday a new tool to help communities decide what prevention steps to take based on the latest transmission data. The CDC's COVID-19 community levels can be designated as low, medium, or high, and are determined by the number of hospital beds being used. Also, they look at hospital admission and the total number of COVID-19 cases in the area. On the CDC website, Douglas County is listed at a medium level, as is on our county dashboard for COVID-19 transmission. At that level, CDC recommends that you talk to your healthcare provider about wearing a mask if you are at high risk for severe illness. Locally, here in Lawrence Public Schools, our executive leadership team will review these local and national public health updates and communicate with our staff and school families if changes are made to our district COVID-19 measures. The Communities Safe Routes to School Work Group will be reviewing requests for school crossing guards this spring. March 4 is the deadline to let city staff know if you would like to see a crossing guard in a certain location. And the requests can be found on the website shown on the screen at usd497.org/crossingguards. You've seen this screen before, but I really want you to take it in. And I will tell you, I was saddened by the Kansas Commissioner of Education's comments during a meeting last week. The comment that he made, in my opinion, perpetuated a harmful racial stereotype about Native Americans. Dr. Watson called me on Tuesday and acknowledged the number of Native Americans that we have in Lawrence, acknowledged the work that we've been doing around equity, and I do believe that he understands the pain that he caused. I believe that his apology and his commitment to learn and to do better is sincere. You know, one of the things that makes Lawrence Public Schools special is its diversity of students, its diversity of staff, and diversity of families. And all of us benefit from a different perspective than our own. All of us benefit from listening and being in spaces with others that come from different backgrounds and cultures, and those different backgrounds and cultures are certainly represented in our schools. Here in Lawrence, we are so fortunate to have Haskell's Indian Nations University in our community. We're fortunate to have them to learn from, to learn with about indigenous peoples and the different tribes all across the country, but not only that, the different tribes that are represented right here in Lawrence. And so I would like to invite Dr. Watson to join Lawrence Public Schools in showing respect, showing appreciation for the many contributions of our Native Americans. We, as you know, we have two school board members that are native. We have many staff, students, and families in our school and community. Not only that, we have a large number of Native Americans here in this state. And so we honor our Native American individuals here in the city, in the school system. And as I stated to him, when you know better, you do better. I reflected on my time first coming to Lawrence after working in two large urban areas. I assumed that I understood diversity, you know? But as I began to learn and listen and then learn, there were some things that I learned that I did better and made some different choices in terms of words. And so this is a commitment that we all have to make, and I know a lot of times we talk about this equity journey that we on. And I would encourage us to kind of refrain from the term journey. Journey signifies a destination, and I don't think this is something we ever arrive at. And so with that, I want to say that to all of our native indigenous peoples here in Lawrence, we see you, we honor you, and we will continue to lift you up. And then finally, I hope that the negotiations that began today between Ukraine and Russia will continue to bring a swift end to the conflict that we're seeing in Europe. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Next is the President of the Board of Education report, and I will keep my comments brief. So on February 15th, I had the opportunity to be on a panel with Vice President Shannon Kimball and Dr. Lewis at the Lawrence Schools Foundation Board Retreat. And we primarily spoke about and answered questions about the current budget situation. And we also had the opportunity to learn about the Lawrence Schools Foundation's vision for supporting our students and our educators. And last week, on February 23rd, I had the opportunity to provide welcoming remarks at the Bob's Dinner. I had never been to a Bob's recognition before, so it was a great honor to be there and to meet the current and past recipients, educators, and also thank the Bob's for their generosity. I believe it's for 25 years they've been providing support to our educators, and so it was a wonderful evening, and so I appreciate the opportunity for the invitation. And that concludes my report. Next is the public comment portion of our agenda. So I have a volunteer to read the policy.
This is Carol. I can read it. The USD 497 Board of Education welcomes public comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in the executive session in order to protect the privacy of the individuals to be discussed. While you are not required to share your contact information, we ask for that information so district staff or the board can follow up with any specific concerns you may have. The board president will invite comment on topics not included on the agenda at the beginning of each meeting. Comments relating to agenda items are welcome after the board has had the opportunity to discuss the topic. Please limit comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. First is Lisa Greenwood.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Greenwood, Library Media Specialist at West Middle School, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Library Media Specialist and our Library Media Assistance that serve every student and every staff member in our district. As a board, you've asked our administrators to provide you with a list of proposed cuts and their impact on students as we address the budget issues. We librarians can provide you 30 years of research from 34 states that clearly demonstrates the detriment to students if our district chooses, excuse me, to further reduce library staff and programs. I say further because over the past decade or so, we've been asked to continue to provide top-notch instructional, resource, and technology support that our students and staff expect in our schools, while balancing an increasing number of responsibilities with reduced budgets and staffing hours. We can share specific information with you and district administration, showing how since around 2010, library staff FTE, both certified and classified, was reduced while our responsibilities have increased. These cuts were always touted as temporary budget fixes, and we were told the staff hours and budget allocations could be restored to previous levels if the economic picture was rosier, but that's never happened. In the six years I've been at West as the librarian, I've seen increased responsibilities with no increase in staff hours. The adoption of one-to-one devices meant that library staff became onsite go-to for instruction, troubleshooting, maintenance, and everything else that comes with putting a device in the hands of every student and every staff member in our buildings. Librarians have sometimes been assigned to teach classes outside of our regular library duties or assigned advisory classes at the middle school level, in addition to teaching and collaborating that we already regularly do at the secondary level. The recently remodeled library spaces provide even more teachers and students space for a wider variety of learning activities, which means we're now managing more learning spaces and supervising more students in those spaces. Maker spaces in our remodeled libraries also require more materials to budget for, lessons and activities to plan, and more students to supervise. Other cuts in the district have shifted even more responsibilities onto librarians and library assistants over the past decade, such as staff cuts at the Instructional Resource Center, shifting some book processing and textbook duties to school librarians. At the same time, those responsibilities increased, middle school LMA hours were cut to halftime, and high schools went from two to one full-time librarian. As these responsibilities have increased, we've not seen the hours for our LMAs increase. LMAs do so much more than check out and shelf books than I have time to enumerate here. We rely on our LMAs as collaborative partners in doing the work that keeps our libraries open, accessible, relevant, engaging, equitable, and safe.
Thank you so much for your comments. I really appreciate that, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alicia Erickson.
Hello, I am Alicia Erickson and here officially representing the Save Our Schools 497 organization. We understand that this is a long and complicated process, and we come before the board tonight to reiterate our desire to work together with the board and with the district to amplify all voices as we seek long-term financial health for the district. To that end, we call on the board to seek more options for cost savings and revenue generation, seek more equally distributed cuts. This cuts include cuts to the district administration level, and also to ensure that individual programs are not crushed while bearing the burden of the financial needs of the entire district. And we ask to foster a transparent and equitable process that allows for creative solutions and broad community participation that equally represents those directly affected. We recognize there are various ways that our Save Our Schools 497 organization can help the district and the board. As you create and evaluate processes, we call on you to include a process for in-community engagement. We have identified four ways we feel our organization can serve as a bridge between the district, board, and community. In the first way, we feel we can help with educating and clarifying information within the community. We would like to help address rumors and also help with basic clarification of funding sources. We can work to rebuild the trust required for success, and from you, we need transparency and your time. Number two, we can help be a repository for cost savings and revenue generating ideas from teachers, staff, and community. We have had over 300 participants in a community survey that launched just over a week ago and have a more direct survey launching this week that we are specifically asking to amplify the voices of teachers and staff. We will publish these results, and I'll send this in an email with more details to you following up this week. We'll share them with you and cagarese and vet them as much as possible. We see a C establishing an open process for collecting ideas as a critical step in involving teacher, staff, and community voices in this process. From you, we need respect, earnest engagement, and open minds. Number three, we can help organize community volunteers to better support teachers and staff, creating a more positive experience and helping with teacher retention. We are working on creating volunteer programs at each school to help give teachers and staff more time and support, whether that is helping in a lunchroom or recess duties or other ways to help for all ages, or creating a structure for a repository for substitute plans across the district. We will use the Save Our Schools 497 organization to amplify voices of teachers and staff. From you, we need support and ideas. And the last one, we can help with gathering information when families or staff leave USD 497 and forming a strategy to address this loss in ways to bring people back. There needs to be an exit survey when families leave 497 for accurate data and to address bringing families back to the district. There needs to be an exit survey for when teachers and staff leave so that we can adequately address problems and increase teacher retention. From you, we ask for collaboration and a willingness to listen. And how else can we all work together? Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Next, we have Njeri Shamari and Kasarian Engera. My apologies if I butchered your names.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am Njeri Shamari, an elder in my community, and I want you to know that we see you. This is my offering for the Lawrence community to consider. The first is credited to author Mr. James Baldwin, which I have taken the liberty to paraphrase for this audience. Children have never been good at listening to their adults. They have never, never failed to imitate them. The second is an observation. I know that I'm being recorded. I want us to remember that this is always the case when young people are present. And the last is credited to no one that I could find in my Google search. Listen to your elders' advice, not because we are always right, but because we have more experience as being wrong. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your words. We will now move to virtual. Is Justin ready to go? Okay. Justin, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead.
My name is Dr. Jeff.
My name is Dr. Justin Space. I have a PhD in lifespan human development from Kansas State University, and I have a master's degree in marriage and family therapy also from Kansas State University, one of the top programs in the nation. As a marriage and family therapist, most of my work is with children who have been sexually abused. I want to talk to you about two words that I worked with each of these children on in their therapy: empower and consent. They go hand in hand, and you are destroying both in our youth by masking them all day, every day. Recently, a student had enough of the mask mandate and stood up and said, "No more. I refuse to wear a mask." She was met with a staff member who said she couldn't possibly have trouble breathing because studies after studies after studies have shown that masks don't interfere with breathing or asthma, essentially telling her to sit down, mask up, and shut up. Teacher should be cultivating her courage, her individuality, her voice, her fight, her spirit. Instead, they do the opposite, told to shut up and take it. Your voice doesn't matter. No kid can march out of step and swim against the current. Where are the parents? What values are you teaching your children by keeping them silent and thus compliant? Extrapolate that into their future and see how that plays out. Silent and compliant leads to being taken advantage of, victimhood and recipients of continued abuse, while on the other hand... Am I still on? While on the other hand, being outspoken, assertive, and even aggressive helps keep us safe from danger by being confident and setting boundaries, limits, knowing it's okay to say no, and if necessary, to defend ourselves against danger. And that's good. Silent and compliant tells children to just take it, don't fight it, and thus they have no fight in them and are easily taken advantage of. Is that what you want for your kids? Or do you want them to be Americans? Do you want to be Americans, to stand up and fight and proudly say, "Nobody tells me what to do"? And those that try can go straight to hell because their opinions mean nothing. The youth are getting restless. I sense it when I stand out on my protest outside of your guys' building every day. And they should be getting restless. Look at the poor examples they have all around them in our community. Men wearing masks at every turn, afraid of their own shadow, emasculated to the point that they can't even say no and tells me what to put over my face. Men allowing other grown men to tell them and their kids and their wives what to do and for how long. There are no examples in the community of people standing up for freedom. There's no one defending the kids as they continue to fall behind in their classes. Everyone's showing that being an unquestioning follower is better than being their own unique individual. These are pathetic values that we are showing them. So yes, the youth are getting restless, and they need to get even more restless. The youth today tend to look back on history and see how real oppressed groups fought for their freedoms, and the youth today get a sense of identity with that passive oppressed group. But they're also disappointed they don't have a real oppression situation that they are in today as well. Look all around you. This is it. This is your chance to rise up against these fools and say, "Hell no."
Thank you, Justin.
Compare your generation...
That is your time. Thank you. Is Sue available and ready to go? Okay. Sue, can you hear us? Sue?
You can unmute yourself whenever.
Okay. Sue? Let's come back to Sue and go to Amy Bowman. Amy, are you there?
Hi.
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 Hang on a minute. Just get that speaker out of here. So I thought my daughter was going to talk. She didn't get to talk, but I'll just go ahead and say what I was going to say, if it's okay. If she can just read what she wanted to read a couple weeks ago, then that would be great. New York has just recently made the masks optional in schools, and I would hope that we could do that here as soon as the county commissioners drop the mandate. Kids have great immune systems if they even get the virus, considering so many people have already had it. It's ran through everybody I know. We do things in our house to prevent sickness that doesn't involve other people having to be inconvenienced, like vitamins and a healthy lifestyle. And I think everyone should be able to decide for themselves if the masks are good, a good choice for them, because people need to make good choices for themselves. That's important also. So, and here's my daughter.
Okay. So I wanted to say this a few weeks ago, but I couldn't.
You got cut off.
Yeah, I got cut off. Okay, so, my name is Lena. I am a student in the USD 497 School District, specifically Lawrence. It is a bit ridiculous compared to surrounding schools. They seem to work their mask mandate around the numbers, whereas Lawrence has just continuously had masks. There are several problems with forcing us to wear masks. Some of us have a hard time breathing. It interrupts class because the teacher has to tell us to pull up our mask, even if we are just chewing gum, and it goes under our nose. It causes anxiety, it causes rashes, and makes it hard to read facial expression. The younger kids are really going to be affected by this, as they need to see the mouth move to learn how to talk. Furthermore, we have spectacular immune systems designed by nature. The majority of us have already had COVID, so we have natural immunity built up. It is no big secret that there is very helpful and important information being censored. While the TV and radio will have you believing, everyone is so much worse off. It's called fear mongering. The lies need to stop, and we need to live free. Wear a mask if you want, don't if you don't. Kids should come first because without us, none of you would be there.
All right. Thank you for letting us speak, you guys.
All right. Thank you. Was Sue still going to speak?
I can put them back at the call, but they're not chatting back.
Okay. Is she... Sue?
Just let her call you.
You talk first.
Sue, can you hear us?
There we go. Hi. My name is Sue Herring, and I wanted to talk to you tonight about the suffering that you're causing our children. You cited CDC statistics to back up your cowardly decisions, and I wanted to remind you that in 1850s, this county was a home base, the seat of courage for liberty and freedom. I can't help but wonder, I wish I could sit down and talk to you guys across the table. I can't help but wonder where your courage would have been in the Civil War era? Would any of you had the courage to help with the Underground Railroad? Or in World War II? Would you have had the courage to help anyone who needed it? And back to the Civil Rights Era? Would you have had the courage to stand for other people's rights? Based on what I see here and your activities in this county and the harm you've done to kids, the answer is across the board is no. You are ruled by the fear that you're fed from the CDC. I guess that's about all I had to say to you tonight. I wish that you would unmask our children and stand for liberty. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Next, the Board will recess into executive session related to public comment. Shannon, would you mind reading the motion, please?
I move the Board of Education recess to executive session to discuss student matters in order to protect the privacy interests of the students to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Shawna Downing invited to be present, and with the Board to return to open session in this room at...
Should I give us ten minutes to get there, hear the comment, and get back?
To resume an open session in this room at 6:58 PM with no action to follow.
I'll take it. Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Immer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Neusbaum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero.[1185.08]
Okay, the board is back from executive session with no action to follow. Next on the agenda is board commentary.
Yes, a couple things. Thank you Erica. Just wanted to say thank you to the schools foundation, board members and staff for allowing me to participate in the panel at their retreat that Erica mentioned during her president's commentary. It was great to learn more about how the foundation is working with the district to support our students and our staff and our schools. February 19th, which is Saturday, I had the, I was thrilled to go attend the ribbon cutting for the new mural on the side of US Bank building. It's called Sustenance. It was a project of Van Gogh and there are apprentice artists this year. Students from USC 497's high schools were among the apprentice artists who worked on the mural. My own student was one of those students, so it was doubly exciting to see the work that those students had done and have it presented to the community. Also attended the Sunflower Elementary School Site Council meeting on February 22nd. Continue to appreciate the staff and parents that are engaged in that school community. And I just wanted to say thank you to the community for your engagement and sharing your perspectives with me. I've met with, zoomed with, and emailed many parents and community members over the last many weeks. I know a lot of you are still waiting on an email reply from me. Please know that I'm working my way through them. It's just been, it's been a lot, so I continue to respond as I can and I just want you to know I appreciate your engagement.
Thank you Shannon. Anyone else? Kay?
Good evening. I kind of want to start off saying that it's always a pleasure to see outstanding educators who are staff, families, and students' support and leadership. So I would like to give my congratulations to Kathy Branson and Becky Reaver in their permanent status as head administrators and leaders in their respective buildings. This is really awesome to see. Additionally, I want to give a congratulations to Russ Middle School teacher Brian Williams for putting on a successful production of Rock the Ages with talented students and crew. Just like sports, our district theater and arts play a significant role in the lives of many students with most years self-sustaining budgets paid directly by families to support. So it's really remarkable what they have been able to do with minimal budget. Since this last week, I have had several experience inside the classroom, which I have enjoyed. My first was visiting Lawrence High School as a guest speaker to speak with our ninth graders about how vast the action of civic engagement, civic engagement is and the importance of getting involved now in doing what you can to help your own community based upon your own interest. My second opportunity was substituting in your door public schools. I am learning that having community as educators is important to plan and discuss with one another. And then the long-lasting stamina educators have to go an entire day with little to no time for self-care. I hope to see that improve over, over my time on the board. So, so it was a lot of perspective there. And lastly, I spent time with some, doing some original playwriting on the history of Lawrence, kind of celebrating specifically with our public schools, writing a scene that depicted Samuel Wilson, the first black male to graduate from Central High in 1879. And other scenes of life with board colleague Carol in the weekend production coming up of Threads of Lawrence Art Center. Finally, I just kind of want to give a brief word about last board meeting and general perspectives from my perspective. Extending trust to our administration during this time as a new board member, it's not easy thing to do. It really isn't, especially when you're learning about the ideal of governance versus management. So I understand and I hear you guys when you're saying, you know, what's going on, you know, how, how come we're not involved as much as we were during this last phase? And at a certain point, you have to, you have to let our administrators, you know, do, do the work and work with our building leadership and coming up with plans. And so I'm just as anxious and eager as most of you are right now, but I'm putting my faith and my trust in our building, in our administration in this next step. And I hope that you can extend some of that trust as well. Thank you.
Thank you Kay.
Hi, this is Carol. I just wanted to thank Dr. Lewis and the district for making a statement about Dr. Watson's comments. And I wrote a rather lengthy letter, opinion, and I submitted it to the Lawrence Times. I did submit that very letter to the Kansas Department of Education members. And yeah, I'm sure they are buried in emails just like I am. I'm doing the best that I can to respond. But um, and, and just like, I'm sad to report, I've not heard a response from any of the members. And I'm still waiting on that apology from Randy Watson because it's, it's sort of justice, just doesn't feel, it's not something that's just in a vacuum. We have two Native American elected officials right here. We're highly educated women. And I don't know, I just, I mean, just, I don't know, I'm just speaking out of anger. I'm frustrated. I'm hurt. I'm saddened. And, and you know, I, my colleague here Erica Hill, she signed in 2020, the Douglas County Health Board that racism is a public crisis. And it, my letter, it does cost the, systemic racism costs the United States $16 trillion a year for missed opportunities. Let me repeat that again. $16 million a year, $16 trillion a year in missed opportunities. And again, I'm like, I'm just so angry. And thank you.
Thank you Carol. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
Ms. Shannon, I move the Board of Education to adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
This is KI second. Kimball?
Yes.
Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Newsbaum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Heel?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you. Next, we'll turn it over to Dr. Lewis to introduce Ann Ma from the Kansas State Board of Education.
Yes, thank you. Good evening again. Typically around this year, particularly as it relates to what's going on in the legislature as well as some things that are happening at the Kansas State Department of Education, we typically invite one of our state board members to just share any updates with us and to address the board and the public at this time. So at this time, I would call to the, it sounds like I'm calling a witness for, call to the stand, Ann Ma, one of our state board members.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis, and thank you board for having me here this evening. It's always good to be here, you guys. You have such a great board. And I can't imagine what it's been like to be in your shoes the last two years. I deal with the high-level issues and sometimes that can be daunting. Got thousands of emails when we were trying to decide, you know, whether or not to, to start school two weeks later or not. But that is not nearly as daunting as what you guys have to deal with. You and other districts are struggling to come out of COVID and figure out what that new normal looks like. And hopefully, we learned through this process that there are some things we can and should do differently going forward, that we won't be going back where we were. And you guys are doing some really cool things with redesign. I had a chance to go to Lawrence Free State and visit some, take a tour of the school and visit some classes with Dr. Lewis. And, you know, very exciting stuff. So I know there are always bumps in the road. The first year you try some new things like that flex mod schedule is like, oh. But you know, you'll get through it and the kids love it. I was out at Rossville High the other day and they're also doing flex mod. But you know, it looks a little different when you're doing it with 200 kids than, or 100 kids than 1,000 kids. So anyway, I just want you to know that everything you do is appreciated by the state board. Dr. Lewis sent me a list of topics you guys wanted to hear about, and there's a lot to get to, so let's do that. One of the things you guys wanted to know about was the virtual education bills because there are several of those on the table and you have quite a large virtual school population. First, before I get into what's going on at the legislature, let me tell you something about the general rules over there. First, nothing ever dies at the legislature. And nothing becomes law until you get 63, 21, and one. That means 63 votes in the House, 21 in the Senate, and one signature or concurrence from the governor. So everything's still up in the air and nothing's written in stone at this point. Also, this is the time of year where we really have to be vigilant. Bills are combined where you can't find them. They're amended to the point where you don't even recognize them. And when they get into conference committee, that's where the real sausage is made. So stay vigilant. KASB does a great job keeping track of all the bills and where they are. Hopefully you guys get those updates every day and you can follow along. In regard to the virtual bills, the House K-12 Budget Committee put three of them together into one. 2512, 2553, and 2550 are all now part of 2512. And here's what they do, as I understand it. First, it recalculates how graduation rates are calculated for virtual schools. If a student is behind schedule for graduation when they enter a virtual school, they will not be counted for KISA accreditation purposes because you know, we want improvement. We're looking at those rates. They will still count for federal tracking purposes, however. The bill prohibits virtual schools from offering financial incentives to students to enroll. I doubt that that's a problem. It increases funding for dropouts entering virtual schools. Right now, if students are 20 or over in a dropout, the school gets $709 per credit hour. Under this bill, that $709 rate would also apply to dropouts who are 19 or younger. So overall, it increases the funding and funds dropouts all the same, no matter what their age. 2512 was not voted on last week. It came out of committee, went to the House floor, but it was blessed, if you will. So it did not die on the floor. It is well, alive and well, so it can be pursued. And I think it will be voted on and probably sent to the Senate. Because the Senate had a hearing last week, I believe, on Senate Bill 499 that also impacts virtual schools. But they did not vote it out of committee, so it's still sitting in committee. But I think you'll be interested, it provides a second count date for virtual school students. So that if you have new virtual school students in the spring semester, you get a half the amount of money for that student. Now, you don't lose money for students that you had in virtual school in September 20th and they may have dropped out or whatever. So you, you can only gain money. You can't lose money the way it's written right now. It also increases state aid from $5,000 to $5,600 per student. Now, this is the maybe interesting part. It says that if a student transfers from a traditional school in one district to a virtual school in another district, and they are behind schedule on how many credits they need to graduate or below grade level, the sending district has to transfer 45.6% of the funding they got for that student to the receiving district. Now, as I said, this bill is still in committee, but what I'm thinking is, Senator Baumgartner, who's the Chair of Senate Education, is very, likes this bill a lot. So I would imagine when the other bill from the House gets over there, they'll just work them all in together. I wanted to mention a few other bills. House Bill 2511 contains that CASHA bill that allows homeschoolers to participate in CASHA events. And it also contains 2514, which changed the compulsory attendance rules so that if you went to homeschool part-time and public school part-time, that would cover compulsory attendance. But that bill now has been marked dead. The rule is generally unless you had a tax bill or a money bill of some kind, and it didn't get passed last week, it's supposed to be off the table. But what they do is they take all these bills that they kind of want to keep around. They send them to an exempt committee to be blessed or touched, and then they come back to the floor and away they go. 2615 now includes 2553 and 2550 also. That bill now has a provision to allow school districts to give credit for learning in non-traditional ways. Like, you know, if you did 4H speech and, you know, you can pass the speech standards, you could get a credit. Truth is, you guys can already do that. It also has that open borders provision in it where students can, you know, go wherever they want as long as the capacity allows, but they don't really define capacity. That one is still alive in the House. Now, House Bill 2690 takes away nearly $50 million from schools statewide that now get the high-density at-risk funding. That's for our most, you know, high-density students living in poverty. I think maybe that's just free lunch, not reduced lunch. That bill did not come out of committee, but we expect the Chair to try to work it into the budget somewhere else. So we need to be on guard for that one. Basically, we thought, well, you know, we were all on guard and I had a lot of people writing letters last week to our House members. And they basically didn't pass anything out on education last week, but they got them all blessed. So they're, they're sticking around and that just means we're going to have to be even more on our toes about where they go from here. Another issue I wanted to talk about was how we are dealing with so many teachers leaving the profession. That was one thing you guys wanted to know about. Of course, COVID magnified that problem by several powers. Not only are teachers leaving the profession, we already know that at the end of this year, more than 25% of superintendents are leaving their posts. We're going to have a lot of holes to fill. So here's some of the things we're doing. About three years ago, the state board led a Blue Ribbon Commission study about teacher retention and recruitment. There were recommendations for the state board, the legislature, and for local boards. The state board took action on nearly every one of the assignments we had, including a new licensure level to increase the number of algebra teachers and pilot programs to increase the number of elementary and special ed teachers. The legislature was asked to fund schools at a higher level so we could increase teacher salaries and benefits. And even though that had to be court-ordered, it did happen. What I don't know about is how much local boards are aware of the recommendations we made for you to look at. So I'd encourage you to get that Blue Ribbon Task Force report out and see if there's still some things you could do to help us keep and retain teachers. I would note that the elementary pilot that we did did not produce many new recruits, but the special ed pilot was quite successful. What they did was they targeted special ed paras to let them work and go to school at the same time. WSU really took the lead on this and they had more than 200 graduates this year. So these are working with people you know are quality people and have experience in special ed, and we're very excited about that. We're also trying to develop a new restricted license pathway for elementary that looks somewhat like the restricted one in secondary. You know, where you can pass the praxis, get into a graduate level program, and get your educational pedagogy while you're teaching. We'd like to see if we can't develop something like that for elementary. We're also encouraging schools to grow your own teachers. If you don't already have an education pathway in your high schools, please get one. And consider starting an Educators Rising Student Group if you don't have one of those. I think this frankly is about going to be the only way that Western Kansas is going to save its schools. But it also works in metro and suburban areas too. I know that Topeka schools have a great teacher ed program that they have at T-Calc. And as those students come out as seniors in high school, if they plan to go into education in college, they offer them a job when they graduate from high school. You go get the certificate, we'll have a job for you here when you come back. And some districts like Kansas City are partnering with organizations to bring people with bachelor's degrees into teaching. They have a really amazing mentoring program where they mentor and they do the pedagogy in the evenings. It's a two-year program, very intensive, and they think that's going to work quite well. We're going to look at some modifications next week when we meet, but it looks like a very interesting model. But frankly, retention is the new recruitment. You know, teachers don't just leave because of money. They want to feel valued. And that is something that can really be addressed here at the local level. I mean, if we could just stop the bleeding, you know, we, we wouldn't have a teacher shortage. But there's so much going on. I mean, teachers are heroes, are champions, you know, everything they've been through the last two years. I know because my daughter-in-law is a teacher, but it's just crazy. I was asked also to talk a little bit about what are the state board priorities right now? Well, the state board is still focused on the success of each child. Our plans got upended by COVID, just like everybody else's did. So our staff is now spending a huge amount of time managing those ESER payments, hundreds of millions of dollars that we're trying to get out to you as quickly as possible. But we are also trying to make sure that the proposals are worthy and meet federal guidelines because the last thing we want to have happen is that a couple of years down the road, the feds call and you have to send that money back because that's been known to happen. We also put a pause on KISA during COVID and let the schools take a year off if they wanted to. But right now, we're also starting a new pilot on melding redesign and KISA together. Some of the schools that just finished their five-year cycle volunteered to do this new model. And they're in training this year and we're very excited about what that might look like, hopefully a much more streamlined process. But our priorities are really the same. Strong academics supported by kindergarten readiness, social-emotional learning, a good individual plan of study, a high graduation rate, and success after graduation. Along with that, we continue to work on mental health, teacher recruitment and retention, moving our reading programs to structured literacy, which I think you guys are way ahead on, if I understand it, and work-based learning. I chair the Student Voice Committee, so I've spent more time than most at student conferences and in classrooms talking to students. Every time I do, I ask one question in particular. What is one thing students are dealing with that adults should be paying more attention to? You know what the number one answer is across the board? Yes?
Mental health.
Mental health. Across the board. Across the board, it didn't matter if I was at K-Camp or Student Council or Educators Rising or in a class at Free State where they said, "Stress." You know, they're stressed. And I think we got some really good ideas from your students about what they're dealing with and how we can help. So we need to talk to students and teachers and listen to them. And I was just really glad I got to visit with the kids that day. You have great kids. They're amazing. I was asked before the meeting to address Dr. Watson's comments, and I'd be glad to do that. As I'm sure you know, Dr. Watson told a story from his childhood at a recent conference that involved recounting of a hurtful stereotype of Native Americans in Kansas. It was wrong of him to do that, and in telling that, he hurt the very children he's been trying to help for the last 40 years. So the question came to the State Board what to do about it. When considering disciplinary action, which we do nearly every month for educators whose actions come before the Board, we look at several things. One is the history of work. Another is the pattern of behavior. And a third is whether the person has shown remorse and made amends. In this case, we found a history of decades of stellar work. We also found no pattern of the same behavior. In fact, we have never had a complaint about Dr. Watson about anything the seven years he has served. Also, as soon as Dr. Watson realized what he had done, he immediately started making contacts and apologizing to people across the state. The Board decided that in this case, one mistake was not going to end his career, and the decision was unanimous. We also believe that firing Dr. Watson solved little as he needed to be here to rebuild those bridges. What we agreed on was to suspend Dr. Watson for a month without pay and ask him to work to restore the relationships he had damaged when he returns. We discussed using restorative practices, which the State Board, and I in particular, have promoted for years. In fact, Dr. Lewis and I did a video last year promoting the use of restorative practices here in Lawrence. And the folks at Schlegel High in Kansas City are working on another one. I really believe in it. And strongly believe that healing is more important than punishment. And when Dr. Watson returns, we will figure out what that looks like for him. We have had a number of offers to help us through that process from folks in the Native American community. The process of bringing together the offender, the victims, and the community will be extensive. I promise you that. But there is also probably an opportunity now for the Board to perhaps make some policy and practice changes of a larger nature. And we will start that discussion at our March meeting. As you know, there are folks at the Capitol who would like schools to stop discussing race, equity, diversity, anything that has to do with history that makes folks uncomfortable. If anything, I can say we honestly have much more work to do here. In fact, the Governor's Commission for Racial Equity and Justice has just finished their final report, and we will get their recommendations at our March meeting. The members of the tribal council, the Chairs, met last week with Dr. Watson and members of the State Board and expressed some things to us that were very important for us to hear about how damaging Dr. Watson's remarks were. We invited them to speak to the State Board. I don't know if that will happen this month, but it certainly will happen. And we are working together with the Governor's Office to rebuild those bridges. Again, Dr. Watson has to play a very important part of that because he's the one that has to rebuild those bridges. He is the offender. We will bring him together with the folks who are hurt and make sure that things happen. As we decide a path forward, I will let you know what that looks like. But we always welcome any input. Now, I've talked a very, very long time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions or concerns that you have.
Hey, Ann. I appreciate you coming and providing all those updates, especially around the bills. I've been watching as much as I can to see how it would impact our district. But to what you said about meeting with tribal councils, they don't need to just come and speak to the State Board. They need to be at the table.
Yes.
When you come and talk about... I'm sorry, is there something? When you talk about proposing a comprehensive plan for... Oh!
I'm leaning on the keyboard. There you go. What'd you say? I can't hear you.
Of course.
Yeah, I think you're absolutely right. And they will be at the table. I guarantee you that'll be part of the process.
And a couple of other things. Because Dr. Watson was, did come down and apologize to me when I immediately addressed that to some directors, a couple of directors at KSDE. But my response to him was I could not accept his apology because it was hurtful and it impacted students and other tribal leaders that had communicated his statement to me. Some of the things that I shared with Dr. Watson is publicly acknowledging the comment, which he has done. I think it's just more than apology because tribes have been apologized for decades. So I think there needs to be some concrete actions behind Dr. Watson's comment. The other, there's a couple of other points I'd asked him to consider was create an action plan for self-learning. And one of the things that I pointed out to him was the Governor's Commission on Racial Equity and Justice Report to review that. And I would even ask the Board of Education to review that and have the discussions among yourselves about racial equity in our state when it comes to students. And also commit to removing the use of Native American mascots in related imagery in public education settings. That is also in the CREJ report. I'd also asked Dr. Watson to hire a cultural competency consultant to address the passive-aggressive behavior in KSDE towards Native people and people of color, LGBTQ, and women. And I also shared with him some of the experiences that I've heard about and have seen myself using the arrowhead chop when the Chiefs were, when the football team is playing, the Kansas City Chiefs, which was highly inappropriate for KSDE staff to do. Again, those were the four points that I had asked Dr. Watson. And I'd also asked the Board of Education to release a comprehensive plan for improvement, not just for Dr. Watson, but for KSDE.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't very clear, but that is our plan. We're hearing the report from the CREJ this month. So that can be part of our thinking. And most of our day on Wednesday will be spent just talking about where do we go from here and what does the bigger plan look like? And we've invited the tribal council to be involved.
I appreciate that. But there are also an amazing staff on there within KSDE that has cultural competency training that would be able to help lead those discussions, those internal discussions.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate that.
This is Carol. I was a part, I'm a part, an active member of the Kansas Association for Native American Education. And we crafted a letter, a statement, if you will, of a list of suggestions for the KSDE and Dr. Watson. And that can be found on Lawrence Times as well. And I do believe it was emailed to you all. But to that end, I, for years, I protested at the Chiefs games because I know how damaging, I'm a licensed social worker. So I can tell you about, and I'm so glad you brought about mental health because that's, I'm a therapist. And I can tell you about the damaging effects. And I could probably teach a class on it. But I can tell you about the damaging effects that mascots have on our students. And it's hurtful, it's harmful. And again, I point back to the public, the racism is a public health crisis. And Erica will tell you because she signed that, the, well, the, she signed that back in 2020, the Declaration from the Douglas County Health Board. But no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm grateful you're here. And, you know, I do, I feel for Dr. Watson. I do because he has been disenfranchised of a good, quality public education. Because I've lobbied for several Native American bills. And I can tell you that every time I go there, I have to start from the beginning of scratch. And people are often amazed that I'm a sixth-generation Kansan because I've been here before Kansas was a state. And people are often amazed when I talk about treaties. And you go back to our treaty of 1854 with Washington. And we were, and we have social welfare agreements and clauses in our treaties. And if you go to the Constitution, Article 6, Section 2 states clearly treaties are the supreme law of the land. So I have to do that every time. So I would like to see that embedded in our curriculum at the state. So this doesn't happen to Dr. Watson. It's exhausting going to lobby every time.
Yeah. Well, you know, a couple of years ago, maybe about three years ago, Representative Zalklin-Win had a bill on requiring culturally relevant pedagogy in all the schools. And we said, you know, if you really want to get something done, you don't pass a bill, you come to the State Board. So they came to us, and we supported their efforts. And for two summers, they provided some amazing training. It was more like a teach-the-teacher kind of thing. But it wasn't very well-attended. And so that's kind of on my list to do more culturally relevant pedagogy in the schools and find out what could we do differently than what they tried those two summers to expand that. But my list is kind of long. I mean, Dr. Lewis will probably tell you I've been interested in racial justice now for a while, restorative practices, equity. We did a video on equity as well. And I'm just not going to stop doing that because the folks at the Capitol don't get it or it makes them uncomfortable. They're going to be a lot more uncomfortable before we're done.
So I want to note that in addition, Paula also has, is a social worker and has mental health training. I was, I was very disappointed by the outcome of the State Board's actions related to Randy Watson. And I was most surprised that there was a unanimous decision that fell in the face of the request of the Governor that he resign. So it's hard to understand a commitment to racial equity when that's the vote. And I wanted to point out the Kansas Association of Native American Educators that Carol mentioned. In their statement, they asked for curriculum reform that respects and affirms Indian, indigenous peoples and nations. And I think this is an opportunity for action in the face of a state legislature that is clearly opposed to supporting schools in their equity work. It was deeply troubling to me that that was the outcome of that vote.
Well, your second point there, I think, was what I was trying to address with the culturally relevant pedagogy. I think we'll address what you were talking about. I think I'd just have to reiterate what Chairman Porter said. The Governor had no business weighing in.
But maybe he had no business voting the way you did.
I just, I'll disagree. Like I said, we considered a number of factors. And to us, one bad mistake would not end a 40-year stellar career. And we were unanimous in that. We felt like firing him solved nothing. In fact, if he's gone, how does he come back and build bridges? It doesn't happen. We need him here facing up to what he did. And I think that's going to be the best resolution. And I'm sorry you disagree, but as, you know, a fellow Board member, when you have those tough decisions, you take all the information. And in this case, it was unanimous. But we just think the Governor was wrong.
Thank you.
Any other comments or feedback? Thank you so much, Ann.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is the new ELA resource. And Patrick Kelly is coming up. Okay.
Good evening. I'm Patrick Kelly, Chief Academic Officer. And if you're looking at the slide, but you're not looking at the slide. Let's see. I know the suspense is killing you.
Should the PC?
Yeah, it did it. Was it on here?
See if that still works. Let's go ahead and switch that over because that's going to be annoying.
All right. So we'll try that again. I'm Patrick Kelly, Chief Academic Officer. And you'll see on the slide it says Chris Hayes. I'm not Chris Hayes. Chris Hayes is our Elementary Curriculum Specialist. She's done an excellent job of working with a large group of stakeholders when it was to consider a new elementary ELA curriculum resource. We're bringing that recommendation to you this evening. And Chris is going to walk you through the process and how we came to the recommendation that you have before you tonight. Chris?
Thank you. I do have notes today because I want to make sure I didn't leave anything or anybody out as we're going through things. So the first thing I want to do is thank you for the chance to be able to tell you about all the work that was done by so many teachers and administrators to really put forth the effort to find something that's really going to work for us and our kids. I also want to let you know that the money to pay for a curriculum resource does not come out of general funds. It is a special fund that come, that is used, that is funded through textbook fees that parents pay. And that's where the money's coming from. I know with the budget time that we have right now, I wanted to make sure that it wasn't something else we were going to have to add to that. The District Curriculum Instruction Assessment Team is recommending the purchase of a six-year contract with Benchmark Advance 2021 to be used beginning next fall. I can't say enough about all of the teachers and administrators that did all this work to make this happen. It was expertise, dedication, commitment. And they really put forth the effort and shined at what was going on. Very quick timeline. In 2019, the Kansas State Department of Education approved a recommendation of dyslexia, which also includes using structured literacy. That's a shift for us in Lawrence. We've been a balanced literacy district for many, many years. And the instructional strategies of, and components of structured literacy is something new for us. Our current research, resource is Reading Street, and in 2021, that was discontinued. So, they don't publish it anymore. We no longer have online access to anything. That was part of that. Then in May of last year, we started creating the process to be able to look at new resources. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the adoption committee, the pilot committee, and the teachers that did the work with that. Information about the adoption committee up there, again, most of the members on that team were teachers that came together. We started coming together in May, after school, worked in the summer. The resources we looked at, the 14 resources, we were really focusing in on those components for structured literacy. We were using some guideline from KSDE about checklist and what to look for. They narrowed the resources down to three for us to pilot. That is Benchmark Advance, CKLA, which is Core Knowledge Language Arts, and Open Court. And within those, those three, that committee did take those through the CSRC, the Culturally Sustainable Resource Criteria. We had sample materials, so we couldn't look through everything, but we did go through what we had to be able to make, to take information from there. The pilot committee then was formed. Most of the people on the committee were from the adoption committee, as long as some additional people involved with that as well. They created a timeline. We want to make sure that we get resources to our teachers by the time school starts next year. There's a lot involved with that in getting them to our IRC and getting them processed so they're in teachers' hands. And so, they have manuals in their hands before May when they walk out. Some teachers want to look at those and start digging into that over the summer. We appreciate all of the work from those two committees that did a lot of work to make all of this happen. The pilot teachers, there's 18 pilot teachers, each one of them piloted one resource, starting in October, and then they officially finished in the end of February, just a couple of weeks ago. However, most of them are continuing to use those resources so that they don't have to change, and kids don't have to change into another resource as well. We were limited in the grade levels. We piloted kindergarten first and fourth grade. We had a limited number of subs we could use to get the teachers trained in the new resource. There was also a limited number of teachers who were willing to do this work during a challenging time in education in their buildings as well. The, let's see. When they were using the resources, they were able to take some notes about anything within the resource that didn't align with the CSRC, taking some notes on those and making adjustments to like, use this photograph, or we're not going to read this story, kind of a thing. But there weren't very many that I've heard of. But it's some, they've only taught a couple of units, so they haven't had a chance, we haven't had a chance to look through everything. The admiration I have for those 18 teachers is immense. The extra time that they took out, they had to prepare subs when they did the training, the time to meet after school to evaluate the resources, the time that they spent learning a new resource and how that's going to work with their kids. And they really taught it with fidelity to be able to see what was going to happen. And that was a huge piece on their part. They were assisted by learning coaches and a lot of that worked too, and it was incredible, the dedication that they showed. The pilot committee then looked at the data after they filled out the evaluations, and we saw that Open Court scored significantly lower than the other two. So, those, that information is not on a couple of slides coming up. Both Benchmark and CKLA are very rigorous, and that was one of the first things, especially with fourth grade, that I heard a lot, is that it's very rigorous. The level of reading the text complexity is challenging for our kids and realizing that fourth graders have not had this moving up through the ranks. And the teachers realize that if they've had this along the way, it wouldn't be as much. So, they did a lot of scaffolding support to make that work for their students. Kindergarten and first, especially with the foundational skills that both of these programs were able to provide, they were very pleased with what was happening with their kids and the progress that they saw. The pilot committee, the majority of the committee chose CKLA as our, to be recommended. Benchmark came in as a second choice, but the people on the committee said that they could support either one of those. The budget, like I said earlier, the funding for curriculum materials comes out of the curriculum instruction budget. And Cindy's going to talk a little bit about what that looks like and where those money, and where that money comes from.
Good evening. Cindy Frick, Executive Director of Finance. The district curriculum budget is paid for out of the Student Materials Revolving Fund. And that, the revenues in that fund come from student materials, the student fees, primarily the books, materials, and technology fee, which brings in about $800,000 a year. The expenditures cover all district curriculum, all ages, all subjects, textbook, workbooks, online resources, as well as the new adoptions when they come up. And so, our cash balance has been declining. The last couple of years, it's been declining a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. This year, when we proceed with this adoption, if that's what you choose, we'll be spending about 1.5 million approximately in this fund. And so, we will be having, watching this fund very closely for future purchases that are needed compared to cash flow on hand.
Thank you. This is a summary of the quotes that we received from Benchmark and CKLA for three years, five years, six years, and seven years. One of the things I do want to say is that the Open Court quote for six years was 1.3 million approximately, because that's not on the table. We looked at what would work best for our kids. We looked at a six-year commitment. We get a discount when we do more than one year at a time. Also, that works within our curriculum review cycle to do six years. When you're looking at the numbers, the one piece that might be a little confusing, if you look at the seven years on the very bottom and under CKLA, the number 953,000, that only includes three years of consumables, and the others, the other, the others represent the consumables for all six years, or all five years, or all three years, or whatever. There was a significant difference, if you look at the six-year quote between CKLA and Benchmark, it comes, comes to 583,300. In a message I had put out last week, I put the number 520,000 because that was a projected discount that we might have gotten if we were going to do that. The, the quote from Benchmark and CKLA for six years, also for Benchmark, it include 11 professional development days from the trainers. And CKLA, it was eight days. There was some feedback from different people in the community, different teachers and things about ed reports and how Benchmark, if you look at the yellow column there, the Benchmark is partially meets the expectations for building knowledge. Both of them, both CKLA and Benchmark met the expectations for text quality. CKLA met the expectations for building knowledge as well. On the last column, where it says usability rating, there's an NA there for Benchmark because that, that's a program that was totally revised over the past few years. They did a pilot for two years and piloted across the nation, different places. And then they launched their new program officially last fall, 2021. So, it hasn't had enough time yet to get a usability rating on there, but wanted to make sure you understood what that was. Also, the Benchmark under building knowledge, the yellow column there, there's a scale at the bottom, and they are at the upper end of that scale for partially meets expectations. We've received feedback from teachers that, that are excited to have Benchmark. They've used it or heard about it from other people, from the teachers that piloted it. We've received feedback of people that are disappointed that we're not using CKLA, and people that are disappointed that we're not following with the pilot committee recommended. Does Benchmark have everything we want it to? No. But it's, it has, it's not as strong in phonological awareness. We can supplement that with Hagerty resources that we already have in place that are paper copies that we don't need to buy more of. It doesn't have as many as decodable readers. We can supplement that if needed with RAS Kids, which has some decodable readers with it. It has leveled readers, and I've seen fourth grade teachers using those as skill-based and not as a leveled reading type of small group, and been very successful with that. The district curriculum instruction assessment team would like to recommend CKLA for our new ELA resource. It is our first, CKLA was our first choice. However, with the cost, we feel like Benchmark Advance is a good second choice. I had a couple of teachers lined up to come and talk tonight. However, one of them is working. Couldn't get off work. And the other one is out of town. But a couple of things that I wanted to share from, from some of the notes was, they thought that it was a comprehensive curriculum. They've seen a lot of growth in how students listen, converse, ask questions about the text. The anchor charts used to help us guide, and they are able to refer to them more frequently for comprehension strategies. The routines unit is something that helps them learn of what, how to talk with peers, how to listen, what routine should look like and sound like. Models of jobs of scholars and teachers are different during, difficult, during different times. A lot of opportunities to respond through, throughout the ELA block. We found it easy to implement Kagan strategies and focus note-taking strategies through Avid. Part of the piece that they had trouble with was the teachers' manuals do not have the standards written right in the teacher's manual. There's a separate document that does that, and that was, that was hard for our teachers because they are so standards-focused. So, that's something that we would have to make sure that we have very clearly lined out for them. This teacher also said they were a big fan of the wide array of texts that were featured in each unit. There's a lot of leveled readers for each unit that align with topics. The kids were engaged with the program. There were opportunities to dive into fiction and nonfiction with purpose and focus. They loved the nonfiction texts and started asking really great inquiry-based questions. The fiction stories were fun to them, fun for them to read, and were easy for them to recall. There's also video examples available through the online resources, which is like a professional development piece. It explains and models different approaches encouraged with the curriculum. The other thing that I wanted to say is that CKLA was one program that we almost didn't pilot because we thought it was too different, and the adoption committee had really looked at it and thought, this is too different, it's too hard. They had some other concerns with it. Others really wanted to pilot it, which is why we did three instead of two. One of the teachers who didn't want, who had a lot of concerns about it, ended up piloting it, and after four days, she thought it was the best. So, I think that speaks a lot to having a pilot program. You don't see everything when you just get samples. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Kristin. Appreciate your, your report. Any questions? So, we saw the recommendation is to adopt the pilot committee's second-choice Benchmark Advance 2021. So, any questions for Kristin?
Possibly Patrick and Cindy.
Whoever it applies to, yes.
Great. Do I go first?
Well, is it okay if I go?
Sure.
So, at one other point in my career on the board, I've disclosed this. So, I'm a person with dyslexia, and my kids also have dyslexia, or one of them does. And as probably I would guess, as one of my parents. I'm trying to understand how, so this really matters to me, but it's trying to unpack your language so that I understand what I'm voting for, because I'm really uncomfortable voting for the second choice, and trying to understand budgetarily what that second choice means and translations for individuals learning to read and our students learning to read. So, can you talk a little bit about, on the first slide, there's a component about dyslexia, and then you talk a little bit about supplementing with coding using another product, I think I understood? Or maybe I misunderstood. Can you just talk a little bit from your expertise about how that will be impacted if we don't select the more expensive option?
So, with, with structured literacy, it is very explicit systematic program, which both programs have.
Okay.
Also, when we took both of those through the checklist from KSDE about structured literacy, they were both, they both met those marks. CKLA was stronger in some areas. One of them was they were, they, they had a more, they had a more robust program for phonological awareness. And our Hagerty program that we have now, that teachers have been using for a couple of years, that would be something we could supplement to address that issue. Does that answer your question?
It does. Yeah. I'll defer to Shannon. Now, I know there's additional questions, and I think I know the directions hers will go. If not, I'll ask them later. Thank you, Erica.
Patrick or Cindy, can you tell me, when was the last time that we increased our fees for the revolving materials fund?
Yeah, I can't tell you the exact year that we increased them, but we haven't increased them in quite some time. We have had some discussions about increasing those fees. As we've discussed that, you know, there's a tipping point there with families. Currently, we don't have families who pay those fees. Some are wavered out, others just choose not to pay them, and we can only assume that that's a difficult financial situation. So, just raising the fees doesn't necessarily mean we'll actually raise the money. We could actually make an argument that we might lower the amount of money that we get from raising those fees. So, that's something, we usually approve those fees in July, and that's something we could have a conversation with the board about at that time, because it, you know, it gets into a lot of our equity work and what our, how we support our families in need. So, it's a really, it's a, it's a tricky situation to try to use fee-based, you know, doing curriculum resources through fee base.
And I guess that's, that's why, I mean, I'm definitely aware of all the things that you just said. But that's why I asked the question, because I tried to think back through my board experience, and I'm not sure I recall ever raising that particular fee. So, that would be 11 years. And this particular board item has caused me to think about that because, like Kelly, I'm pretty uncomfortable with going with our teacher's second choice in this instance, particularly given the amount of emphasis that the State Department is putting on structured literacy, and the amount of emphasis and scrutiny that we are under from both the State Department and frankly, the legislature around reading achievement, mastery by third grade, and improving scores for our at-risk students. And so, I'm glad that we're going to be talking about that. I think it's, if we are going to rely solely on revolving materials fund to fund our curriculum purchases, I think we have to talk about that, especially if it's true, especially if my memory is true, that we have not raised that fee in 11 years. I guess, I'm curious, did we, did we give DCAs to any of these classrooms that were piloting these programs during the time that they were doing the pilot?
I want to speak to that, Chris.
One. I see Zach raising his finger, one. What did the, what did the assessment data look like? That is between the different products. Do, did we pull, did we pull out that data?
It's too small of a sample size, and that, I mean, it's just one data point. So, we, we looked at it, but the information there, we're not able to really glean on what outperformed another one.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you. And I also had the same question that Kelly had noted when you were describing the differences between the two programs. And you mentioned that we would have to supplement Benchmark with Hagerty and RAS Kids. Would we have to provide, would we have to continue using or purchasing those supplementary programs if we went with the other, with the committee's first choice?
So, I'll check with Chris. I don't, I think we decided we wouldn't need to do RAS, which is something we do now. And the dollar amount on that is 20, is it 62 or 26? I get them backwards.
RAS, I think it's 26.
I think it's 26,000. So, you-
RAS is 67.
67,000.
Okay.
So, you spread that out over the six-year contract, and it's still, I mean, the big challenge, because we were first, we were all in with CKLA. But when we started to look at all the other requests for resources, and you've seen that curriculum review timeline, spending 1.5 million to have those resources would set back so many of our other areas. I'm going to check with Chris, but I'm, I'm pretty sure the concerns or the differences wasn't necessarily that it wasn't going to be able to teach kids those basic skills for reading that are so crucial. It may have been just the amount of resources or the types of resources that were there was really what divided it between one and two. We're just trying to balance some different values there that are coming up about being thoughtful about all the different areas that need those dollars. So, we're thinking ahead to high school social studies, which hasn't been renewed in a number of years, and high school science, which hasn't been renewed in a couple of years. Certainly, if we had, if money was not a concern, if finances were not a concern, we would go with first choice. But in this, it is a concern, and so, that was something we thought we had to consider. That probably doesn't make you feel any better, and I get that. But I think we have a responsibility, you give us that responsibility, to look at those overall budgets and the dollars that are there, and make the best recommendation to you.
I think my, my last question is maybe more of an evaluative one for you, Patrick. So, one of my concerns about going against the recommendation of the teachers that piloted these programs is that there will be a great deal of lost opportunity cost when we try to roll out a curriculum that our staff is not as excited about using. And I just, you know, I wonder if we will struggle with effectiveness of, of the choice when we say to our staff, thank you for your input, but we're not going to give you the resources you've asked us to give you. Now, please do this instead. I guess, what would you, what would you say in response to that?
So, I think, I think for one, all of our staff need to be involved in the conversations when it comes to budget, you know, and what we can, what we are able to do with the dollars that we have. And I, I guess I would, I would push back a little bit on, we told you what we wanted, and you didn't get it for us. You had 14 different options that you looked at, and many of those we dismissed thanks to the great work that-
many of those we dismissed thanks to the great work that happened with teachers. We paid teachers for piloting that, you know, those teachers that did choose to pilot, they were paid to do that work, and, and I certainly understand that no matter what we chose tonight, there were some that maybe chose Benchmark as their first choice, and that they could possibly say, "This wasn't the thing I wanted," and we may hear a different story if we didn't, if we didn't recommend Benchmark tonight, if we recommended something different. I think what, what my responsibility is, is the chief academic officer, is to look at the big picture, not just at one resource, and seeing like, how does this play into it? If I asked our elementary teachers and said, "Look, here are the two differences in costs," you know, "How would we want to spend that?" I don't know how they would answer. And quite honestly, I think if we had had a little more time, we might have done that. But we have to hit this March 1st deadline, or we won't have materials in the fall. We've heard that before, and I think you have heard some of that from teachers before of, "We're trying to roll out a new resource. We're not getting the professional development at the beginning of the year. We don't have all the reso-" We've worked very closely with publishers to make sure that they would have those resources here for August. To do that, we had to get to March 1st. So we made a choice there, whether to take this back to the, the Pilot Committee, back to the Adoption Committee, and sort of walk through the two financials, or do that as a curriculum instruction and assessment. We chose the latter due to the timeline. So I do recognize that, and I appreciate that. And, and certainly, with all the money in the world and all the time in the world, we could, we could do a better job for everybody, but we do have those constraints.
There were people that chose CKLA as their first choice. Were there votes for Benchmark as the first choice? So it wasn't a unanimous decision necessarily. It was the majority.
But they, but they said that they could support either one.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That was my point that I was gonna talk about. So he said there was 14 options, and these are the top two?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that's right. We started with 14 and the adoption.
Okay, so these are the top two options out of 14. And then in the notes here, it did say that the committee agreed that either program was acceptable. And so when we talk about a percentage of staff that is not excited about Benchmark, what percentage of staff is that?
We don't know.
Like, is it the majority? Is it?
Yeah, that, that would be a great number to know, wouldn't it? That would make decisions a little easier. And unfortunately, not every teacher piloted the, the resource, not every teacher, you know, we just don't have, we would then have to buy all three resources, right? And have enough time to do that. That's why we have committees that represent those teachers and take that responsibility very seriously. But I'm sure you have all served on a committee before, and, and sometimes there's differences of opinion at the end. But, and we tell them, this is their recommendation, and then curriculum instruction assessment makes the final recommendation to the board, because we do have to include budget as, as a factor in that decision.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or feedback before we get consensus?
Yeah, so I'm gonna I guess my, I'm trying to look through my notes of questions I got about this. So can you tell me about matching the phonics sequences? And I feel like I'm asking something outside of my, I'm nervous about this, this particular vote in a way that I haven't normally been, and I'm, I'm trying to ask informed questions based on research I was able to do. So if this question does not come out, well, please forgive me, but we did get comments around decodables, again, from Kids A to Z to teach Benchmarks Advance, that they'll not match Phoenix, or phonics sequence. Can you talk about that? Does that make sense?
It does. So the resource will have, has a, both resources have a scope and sequence-
Right.
An explicit systematic is the scope and sequence piece. RAS is set up, so if you go in and, and you want some more decodables for whatever phonics skill that you're working on, you can choose them.
Okay.
So you can choose which one that would match what the resource has for the systematic, for the scope and sequence piece.
Okay.
All right, so.
If I could just, just add, just as a reminder, this is a resource for our talented teachers. One of the questions I used to ask as principal in a, in a district that was heavily focused on structured literacy was, "Talk to me about how you would teach reading using a cereal box." And so the good teachers that really understand how to teach reading were able to answer that question. Now, as they indicated, that this is not our first choice. I kind of look at it as a Cadillac and a Ford, right? Both vehicles will get us to the destination. There are some features on the Cadillac that we would love, but the Ford will get us to the designation, and right now, we have a Ford budget, you know, and I think this is a part of the overall big picture of some of those conversations around, you know, acknowledging that there will be some loss as it relates to some of these budget decisions. This is one of them. While I would love to go with the first choice of our teachers, I had a conversation with a teacher Friday about this. But when we look at our, our budget, we just can't, you know, you're looking at other areas as it relates to curriculum that we need to use these dollars on as well. As Patrick indicated, looking at the big picture, it's something that's really impactful for us.
That's helpful. Thank you.
So, so the reminder that we've asked the district to recommend budget cuts, but while keeping the integrity of our curriculum, that's something that we're very passionate about. And so the board has directed district leadership to find $7 million from the budget. And from what I understand, this, what they presented and what the final recommendation was from the committee was choice number two out of 14. That's how I understand the situation. So are we, yes?
But from my understanding, this particular item is not, it doesn't come out of general funds. It comes out of a separate fund, so it's kind of almost separate issues. Is that correct?
Yes, this is using the Textbook Materials Fund, which is its own fund exactly for this purpose.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. So are we ready to make a motion? Before we do that, I want to add a little clarity to what I, the point I was making. It's, if we're asking the district to bring recommendations, it's not always going to be the top-tier Cadillac, if you will, because that's not where we are right now. So even though these funds won't affect that, we will have decisions in the coming weeks that it will. And so using this as an exercise to get us in that mindset, if you will, of, yes, we'd love the Cadillac, but we can work with the Ford, going off of Dr. Lewis's analogy. So just keeping that in mind as we're making decisions going forward. So with that, do we have a motion anyone would like to make? As outlined in board docs? If not, we can, what's the timeline for a decision? Remind me, please.
Yeah, we really wish we could wait. If we choose to wait, if you want to think about it some more, if you want to come, us to come back with a different recommendation, we could do that. We cannot, we would not expect that materials and professional development would be available in preparation for the 2223 school year. We are currently making it work, as you saw in Chris's presentation, in July of 2021. Did I get that right, Chris? Yeah, the current resource we have, Reading Street, was no longer available, so we added Hagerty last year. We really had hoped to bring this to you last year, but just our teachers told us, "No, we can't spend time working on this." And so we've been making it work so far. And if we were to delay tonight, we just couldn't, we couldn't assure that we'd have that in time for August.
Okay. So lots of silence on the board. So what's the recommendation from the board, just talking about what would you be comfortable with, given the timeline that Patrick just spoke about?
Can I start? I'm gonna ask a budget question. So Shannon asked, raised the question related to next year, which is not a vote we can take tonight about fees. We don't have time to do that. So I'm asking, are there other funds that we could use in the interim if we wanted to get the curriculum that we felt most confident about? And the answer might be no, but I want to double-check that.
The other option is to transfer from general fund-
Okay.
-into textbook fund. And since we have a lot of cuts there, it would just be an additional amount that we would have to add to our cut list.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm looking for the motion personally, so just can-
Your what?
I'm looking for the motion, so.
You're looking for it?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Okay.
The language on it.
Okay.
So just give me a second. It may be a really long second. Carol, do you-
This is Carol. I move the Board of Education, approve the purchase of Benchmark Advanced 2.5 grades kindergarten through fifth grade classroom 30 copy package and digital six-year contract in the amount of $882,000, $882,900, $900 to be paid from the student materials or volume fund elementary curriculum and instruction budget.
This is KI, second. Kadu Blackwood?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Jones?
No.
Newsbaum?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimball?
No.
Oh, I started with Kadu Blackwood. Motion fails. Count wrong, I'm sorry.
I think it passed.
I'm sorry, motion passes for three.
President Hill, could I explain my vote? Thank you. First of all, thank you, Patrick and Chris, and all of the staff who worked on this. I want you to know that my no vote is not, not a reflection on what I think of the value of the work that you've put into this. This one really has been hard for me. I do not reject a recommendation from our staff in this area lightly. However, it is my belief that given the, the emphasis that KSDE and the legislature and our district have put on third-grade reading achievement as the part, one of the most important things that we could do for our students to improve outcomes, to increase graduation rates ultimately. I felt compelled to cast my no vote because I wanted to emphasize how, how I feel that we should be prioritizing this particular curriculum decision, probably above all others in terms of the resources that we're choosing to do this work, because it is so foundational to everything else that we're doing. So I thank everyone for the work that they have done, and I just wanted to share my thinking behind why I ultimately chose to vote no on the motion. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next on the agenda is data-informed decisions. Dr. Zachary Conrad.
Good evening, Board. I am Dr. Zachary Conrad. We're going to be reviewing our process that we've put in place. If you'll remember, in the November board meeting, we had discussed some of the things that the district was doing around data-informed decisions, and tonight we'll be pleased to hear from building administrators and some staff on the work that they're doing in the building around data-informed decisions. We will hear from Early Childhood, Schwagler Elementary, and Southwest Middle School. After that, we'll also review some graduation data. So data-informed decisions are, are based around these two points. We use data to inform all instructional decisions. We develop systems that support student-focused database decision-making. You remember at the November board meeting, I had this quote up there, "Action without vision is only passing time. Vision without action is merely daydreaming, but vision with action can change the world." We are attempting to put our vision and action together with this plan. So we established some goals during the summertime where buildings were able to select from these goals. We are working with the buildings to make sure that they are SMART goals. We do this in three different ways. First, we have these one-on-one touch bases. I meet with building administrators and their teams monthly to make sure that they have the data and support in place. We have check-ins three times a year where they are able to come, and we're going to hear about three of those buildings in, in the check-ins that we recently had with them. And then they also have the opportunity to get ongoing feedback, reviewing that data with their staff and BLTs. I shared this timeline before, and so we had the building goal check-ins in January, and actually it bled into February a bit. And one of the things that we focus on is making sure that that data is available, it's accurate, it's accessible, and most importantly, it's actionable. And so this is what we're going to hear tonight from our building administrators on how this process is working within their buildings. So first, I'd like to invite Esther up and her team to review a few of the things they're doing, and then following Esther, we'll have Dr. Comfort and his team, and then Dr. Miles and her team.
My name is Esther Cotwitz. I'm the Early Childhood Coordinator and Building Administrator for Kennedy Early Childhood Center. And the people who will come with me tonight are Trish Wills, who is an early childhood special education teacher, and Jill Anderson, who is a general education early childhood teacher in our pre-K readiness classrooms. So thank you for having us come tonight to talk to you a little bit about data-informed decisions that we're making. We're emerging in this process. We've not mastered it yet. And so what I do want to do as I go through this is give you a little bit review of where we're at. Availability of data, I will say that I've been here, this is my third year, and when I came on board with Lawrence Public Schools, I was impressed by the amount of data that early childhood teachers in both general education and special education were collecting. It was a lot of data about individual children and groups of children. So I think that we're, the department is strong in that. But what we're working on is taking that data and making it usable for everyone, to not have teachers working individually around children or even with teams, but giving us the opportunity to compare data and make decisions for the whole department. The accuracy of our data is important. I believe that the accuracy of data was important for all teachers anyway, but what we're doing is we're allowing some consistency and fidelity on how we collect that data and how we use it. And then as we go into the spring, we'll be looking at accessibility of data across teachers and across departments, so that we can make decisions about what we're doing with state standards, the priority standards that we've identified. Are those still the priority standards going into 2223? And then how do we communicate with each other using that data when we want to make changes to curriculum, curriculum use, focus? I believe that our focus right now is viable and will continue, and those are focused on social emotional skills and development, and then also working toward that third-grade goal for reading for children. And then are we actionable? I hope that we can address this and be very strong with actionable around our data by fall. Again, we're emerging in this and continuing with professional development. Again, we're emerging in this and continuing with professional development and also collaboration among teachers and related service providers to get to being actionable in a way that anyone could step in and pick up on that data use. So I would like to have the two teachers talk to you a little bit about how they use the data. Jill, as a Gen Ed teacher?
I get to go first. Jill Anderson, good evening. As a Gen Ed, we have really worked hard this year, especially in the fall, to bring our program to look at those priority standards. Kansas has rigorous early childhood standards, and we prioritize those and so that we can look at those throughout the whole program. Because we are the year before kindergarten and we want our students to be kindergarten-ready, then we look at those standards that we have and looked at them compared to the kindergarten standards. Because where we are is the end of May, where we want them to be in August. So that's where we started, and we worked really hard on that. General Ed, we kind of work as the whole class. We look at those standards. We look at where we are with our data amongst the classrooms. But even then, in the personal classrooms, more of those small groups and where they are and how we can move our students to get ready for kindergarten.
Hi, Trish Wills, Early Childhood SPED. In the SPED world, especially on the early childhood level, we use our data to drive literally every decision we make in the classroom. And the data that we take on our students is important in several ways. It's important because it gives us a look at each individual student and helps us determine if their IEP goals currently are what they should be, if they're appropriate, if we need to change them. How are they doing on those goals? What kind of progress are they making? We also take that data and look at it. Because our kids are at such a range of skills, three to five years with exceptionalities, we're talking about a huge range of skill levels. So we use that data to determine how are we running our classroom and how are we meeting the needs of each student, not only individually, but also as a group? So as Jill was saying, we look a lot at those ready-to-learn skills to prepare them moving into kindergarten. So we use that data to really determine how are we laying that groundwork as their first stop, as most of these families' first stop in the public school system? How are we using that data to lay that groundwork so that they're meeting their needs? They're making progress on their goals while they're with us, but they're also becoming ready to enter the kindergarten stage and move on from there. So data's pretty huge, and we're pretty proud of the work that we've put in. And I think, yeah.
So we've talked a little about, you know, where we are in our process for gathering data, using data, and making informed decisions. I hope that we'll be invited back next fall to actually bring some data, give you some specific information about what we've learned around child growth this year in preparation for kindergarten and for students who are three and will continue with us next year as they're four years old. And then we'll be able to share that data and then also reflect on what we'll be doing different for 2002, 2003, based on that. Thank you.
Good evening. Jared Comfort, Principal at Schwagler Elementary School. We're privileged and appreciative of the opportunity to talk with you tonight. Also have with me Chris Casson, our instructional coach, and also Sheri Murray, our first grade, one of our first grade teachers at Schwagler, who also is a pilot teacher this year for the LA resource that you already talked about. We just kind of wanted to talk to you about our processes as we built, as we've built them in our school. The first one being just our goals. And we were able to, with the guidance of the district, meld our two goals, the cohesive and guaranteed curriculum goal with our data-informed decision-making goal. And so really, by putting those together, the process is pretty seamless. And so kind of with our work with our PLCs, our professional learning communities, to build our Common Formative Assessments utilizing our standards work, and then coupling that with the expectation of student achievement and proficiency, that's kind of how that system works to help support our students and support our teams. Chris is going to talk to you. Ms. Casson is going to talk to you about our PLCs and how our teams work, and then also how she and I help support those teams, so.
Hello, good evening. Like you said, I'm Chris Casson, the instructional coach at Schwagler. And a quick overview of what our PLC looks like. Our teachers use that Wednesday collaboration time to meet as teams, and they plan their instruction based off of the data that they're collecting. We model, we use the model called a 15-day cycle just to replicate our, where we're going, our structure. And so we give a Common Formative Assessment, a CFA, at the beginning to see where we are with those standards. And then we base our instruction, that drives our instruction moving forward. And then along the way, we give other CFAs to have checkpoints to make sure that we're on track to meet that standard and meet that benchmark. And during that Wednesday collaboration time, Dr. Comfort and I make rounds. And we are on an A, B, C rotation. So like the first Wednesday, he's in three different classrooms, meeting with those grade-level teams while I'm with the other three. That way, we can make sure that somebody's there to support them, answer questions, or help them in any way they need it. We also look at their PLC notes that they turn in every week just to make sure that we're up to date each week and on where they are in that PLC process. And so Mrs. Murray is going to share about what that looks like in first grade.
Good evening. I'm a first-grade teacher at Schwagler, and I'm here tonight to enlighten you on our usage of CFAs, or the Common Formative Assessments, within our instructional planning process, in particular, how my team works through this process. As a staff, we implemented the use of CFAs approximately a year ago. It is still a work in process, but I can definitely see the benefits of using CFAs within our instructional planning process. My team begins this process by determining which learning standard we need to address. We then break that standard down into a particular concept or skill and put it into student-friendly terms. Our next step is then to create the assessments that we feel would prove mastery of this concept or the skill that we want to cover within that standard. So we're basically working backwards when we're doing this process. These assessments that we do typically consist of the pre-test, and we do a midpoint, and then the post-test. At this point, then, we will sift through all the resources we have available to determine what will truly support our instruction to help our students with their learning. We also have discussions with our support staff to gather their input and suggestions of any additional resources that they have for the instruction, especially for our Tier Two and Tier Three students. After the CFAs are given, we collaborate over the data to examine which instructional practices were the most effective for either all the students or even for particular groups of students. Upon review of this data, there has been time where we've chosen as a team to speed up our instruction because we feel the students have mastered the particular concept we're covering. However, I can say, there has been more times that we have chosen to slow down our instruction and provide more hands-on practice, bring in other resources, and enlist additional help from our support staff to help those students that are really struggling with the concepts that we are trying to cover. CFAs are a powerful tool that I feel provide immediate feedback of our students' understanding of the chosen standard, which then enables us to monitor and truly tailor our instructional practices. When we know with such specificity the impact of our instruction on what students have or have not learned, we can be much more precise and therefore much more effective in helping our students in their learning. As a teacher, I feel I'm truly able to provide the learning environment that's much better fit for each and every student within my classroom.
Thank you. Thank you, Schwagler.
Good evening. I am Dr. Carissa Miles. I'm the principal at Southwest. And I am here with Rosemary Bloom, who's our academic interventionist. And I am so excited to share the absolutely incredible work that our teachers and staff have been doing this year. So this summer, our building leadership team got together, and we came up with a couple of different school improvement goals. And one of them was what we like to call the Guaranteed Three. So early on this year, all of our teachers decided three skills standards are concepts that they wanted all students to know or be able to do before they end the school year. And the way that we were going to measure that was through our Common Formative Assessment work that we're doing. And so we had to get our toolbox, right? We knew what our goal was, we ran to get our tools. And so we started looking at what information do we have available to us to make sure that we had a complete picture of our students? So we started looking at FastBridge data. We looked at DCAs. We looked at last year's state assessment scores. We looked at walkthrough data. We looked at attendance and behaviors and social and emotional traitors. So we started to put it all together so that way, we could get a full and complete look at our students to really understand where they are and how to start planning to move them. And so once we had the tools in the toolbox, we had to figure out how to make it accessible for teachers. So early on, I quickly realized that performance matters was a bit of a hurdle for our teachers, the technology itself. So we wanted to remove that, right? Because that wasn't the objective. Our objective is to move students. And so we started to create Google Sheets, and we made a lot of really beautiful, really colorful Google Sheets. And we taught people how to manipulate that data. But then, besides making sheets and starting to provide that data to teachers, we had to create space. So space and time became huge. So we cleared out our weekly team meeting schedules. So that way, once a week, every team or PLC could meet together to talk about what's happening in classrooms and the data to go along with it to make sure that what we were doing, the tools on our plate, were the correct tools. And we also cleared our Wednesday collaboration schedule. So on most Wednesdays, you'll find us doing some deep PLC work. And then our academic interventionists and our learning coach push in on a regular basis to all of our staff to make sure that they have all the support they needed. So that was kind of the first part, is just really making sure that it was accessible. The second part was to make sure it's accurate. So when we started looking at DCAs or CFAs, we wanted to do a question analysis. So we looked at the questions in depth to make sure that we were asking the right things and to make sure that they were aligned to the standards that we're teaching. And then we also looked at the distractors and kind of started to analyze the questions. And we worked through this deep work. Now, was it all accurate? No. This is a continuous learning improvement process. We're not expecting everything to be perfect the first time, but we are expecting that we are going in and we are working hard to make sure that we are making data-informed decisions. And so we are really thankful to have Dr. Conrad and Dr. Rambler to partner with us to help our missteps and to kind of keep improving on our own practice and our partnerships with the district office to make sure that the test and assessments that we're giving kids is accurate. And we like to say at Southwest that we want to succeed wonderfully and fail forwards. And so there have been a few opportunities for us to learn, and that's okay, we're okay with that. And the last step is we really wanted to take action, and we didn't want to wait. Our kids don't have time for us to wait to figure out how to read a spreadsheet or how to analyze where they are. So we had to work really hard and really fast. And so we started doing things like intervention groups, where we started using our data to help figure out which kids need specialized instruction, whether it's through a SPED referral or if it's through ESL supports, or if we needed to do different flexible groupings during the school day, or if we needed to differentiate within the classroom. We really kind of looked to target where and when and how to best meet individual student needs. And so we've taken action. That's kind of that next step piece that we wanted to talk to you about tonight was students. And how do we get students involved in this process? Because we really believe that that ownership needs to also fall on students and not just teachers. And I'm going to let Rosemary speak about that.
Okay, yes. Again, my name is Rosemary Bloom, and I'm the academic interventionist. And what we did, as you can see here, is, first of all, we got the teachers really involved in taking a good look at the DCA tests. And we put above each section the standard and then looked at the questions that were asked underneath that standard. And then we provided the information with regards to how the student answered that particular problem or question. And so that gave us some insight as to possible ways of where the reteaching may need to occur, as well as do we need to move these students in individual groups and address those standards that way? One piece, though, that seemed to be missing was, we had a lot of students telling us, "Well, why are we taking these DCAs? What are they good for? You know, does it count for anything?" And so what I thought about was developing a piece that would allow them to do some own, their own self-reflection on the process. And so what the piece is, is at the top there, it identifies the correct answer as well as what the student answered. And then it provides the opportunity for the teacher to go through the test with the student and have the student identify whether or not this was a careless mistake or was it a conceptual mistake? And it gives them a little bit more ownership in the learning process. And on the back, it would identify the standard, and they were grouped according to standard so they could see, you know, if they needed particular work in those areas. And so that gave them more insight into their own student learning. And we're hoping that this can be a piece that can work with the teachers, students, and parents because we don't want the DCA to be a mystery to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for sharing that with us. I want to identify that this is a big process. We had one goal, and we took this. And you guys have now seen what we've done at the district level in that process and what takes place in the buildings. This is a tremendous lift on just this one item we have here to move third grade reading or eighth grade math on that academic piece and the data portion of that. And they do a phenomenal job, and we get to hear about it. And I really felt like you guys should hear about it as well, from them, what terrific work that they do. And the Building Goal Check-Ins, it's a big group of us where you have the principals, you have the learning coaches, teachers. All the staff are involved. But then also at the district office, Kristen Ryan and Rick Henry are supporting. It's a big lift, and it's amazing to watch. Really amazing. So any questions up to this point before we get to some graduation data?
I don't have any questions, but you're right. This is a really big process. And so I really appreciate you and the team taking the time to show us everything that you've done. And a lot of work, obviously, went into this, so I appreciate that.
I have a quick question. In reading the material beforehand, one question that came to mind, and I'm not sure that now is the time to ask it or maybe more toward the end. So I'll throw it out there, and if you want to hold it, I understand.
Okay.
I was wondering how you apply these same approaches to the College and Career Center and the JDC?
Okay, we will, we got Bill here with us.
Okay.
I don't know. If you'd prefer to hear from me or Bill. The same thing applies. So Dr. DeWitt is able to come, and I meet with him on a regular basis. And he comes in for data consults as well, or Building Goal Check-Ins, that name. And so the same process applies.
Okay, thank you.
I was just going to say that it was really great to see our Early Childcare Center here tonight. So it's really great to see you guys. So thanks for coming. We don't get to hear about them enough.
So we do want to share some graduation data with you. And this is, starting with 2015, you'll see at the top of the chart, the year, 2015, 16, 17, all the way to last year. And then we have, down at the bottom, you see that it's district and state. So the district is in the blue, the state is in the orange, and the percentage is at the top of the bar. So you can see in 2015, the district was at 84.2%, and the state was at 85.7%. Fast forward all the way to last year, the district is at 84%, 84.2%, and the state is at 88.1%. The state did see a decline, albeit slight, and we did see an increase over the prior year of 2020. We also broke this down by- We also broke this down by building. And so, the first building we'll see is Free State. And you'll see the same, the years at the top, going all the way across, starting from 2015. And then, at the bottom, you see Free State, the district, and the state. Free State is in the green. Free State did see a slight decrease over last year. But overall, Free State is above the district and the state. The next slide is LHS. It is laid out the exact same way. So, we'll see LHS in red. And in 2015, they're at 91.4%, and 2021, they're at 80.6%. Then we have LVS. LVS in 2015 at 59.1%, and currently, this year, 77.6%. You can see that LVS has had some steep increases in graduation rates over the previous five or six years.
Zach, which year was it? Can you remind me, which year was it that the district took over managing the high school at LVS? From, we used to use a, we used to have a company that did that work for us, and we took it over. And if you don't know the answer to that, maybe-
I wouldn't know. That was before me.
Patrick, do you know the answer to that? Have I been on the board long enough now that I'm asking questions that nobody knows the answers to? That's a sad thing.
I want to think that was like two or three years ago. It wasn't that long ago, but don't quote me on that. But it was fairly recently. We did contract with another company that did high school LVS.
I was just trying to remember, because I know that one of the reasons we talked about doing that was the grave concerns that we had about the graduation rates. And it appears that that decision has produced benefits. Okay, thank you.
And I believe what was shared today by Ann Maugh, and the changes that they're thinking about making there, will also see some improvement in those graduation rates. And then, we also broke down graduation rates by race and ethnicity. And we did this in two ways. This first slide, you're going to see this is within race and ethnicity. It's easier to view it in this manner, within race and ethnicity. So, this first column is African-American in blue. And at the bottom, you can see the years. So, this is an easier way to view African-American over, African-American students over those years of 2018 to 2021. The next column in red are students that have identified as Asian, and then Hispanic, and so forth. The orange to the far right is the total, the district totals. So, you can kind of see in comparison where they're falling. The next slide is actually between. It's easier to compare between when they're all grouped together by year. And so, we made two charts here. One compares within, and the other is easier to compare between. So, at the top, we have 2018. And then, we have all the race ethnicities at the bottom with the total next to it, going all the way across to 2021. Are there questions over these slides?
I do have a question. So, if I'm reading this correctly, it shows that African-American students have seen the largest decline of all the races. At least, there's a small one, like 0.2%, but why is that?
So, yeah, in 2020, they had the highest graduation rate. And in 2021, it dropped. This is mainly due to the small N size. Percentages function off of your numerator and denominator. And because those numbers are smaller, it affects your percentage more. And so, there's been years where the state doesn't report, for accountability purposes, African-American graduation for our district, because it's under that 30-count. And so, just to give you an idea, that the numerator and denominator are what are kind of exacerbating that percentage drop. Are there any other questions over the slides?
Yeah, I do want to acknowledge, yes, we definitely have some work to do with some of our subgroups. But I do want to highlight, for one, our Hispanic students from 73 to 80, and our Native American students from 75 to 85. And then, obviously, the tremendous amount of work that's been done at LVS. But overall, as a district, for the past four years, we've been sitting at 82%. And this year, we are up to 84%. And so, I think that's something definitely to celebrate. While we're not there, I think we're headed in the right direction as it relates to our graduation rate.
And speaking of additional things that we're doing, because we're not there, we're still moving forward, I'm going to go ahead and let Dr. Johnson address some of the things that we're doing at each of the high schools to continue the progress we're making.
Good evening to the board. Thank you for this opportunity to share the current reality of the work that we're doing in our high schools. Dr. Conrad has given you a historical glance of the work, and we're going to take a moment right now to look at where we are at this present time. We're going to begin with Free State High School. The numbers on the screen state that the number of seniors at Free State, current reality is 451. Number of seniors on track to graduate are 437. Number of seniors who are not on track to graduate are 14. So, of those students that are not on track to graduate, the other question that I ask the principals are, what types of things are you doing to reach out to those students that are not on track? We're not just saying, "You're not on track, we're going to give up." That is never the story. So, you will see the list of different strategies that are being implemented in the buildings. The one that I want to speak to right now is, the fourth one is, the highlighted one, it says structured learning time. Now, this time, according to Mr. Graber, and Mr. Graber is here tonight, as well as all the other administrators, high school administrators, because if you had additional questions, they would be the ones that would be able to articulate the final details. The structured learning time is assigned time. One of the things that really intrigued me about the structured learning time is that it focuses on student outcomes, as well as teacher outcomes. For the students, it focuses on learning gaps. It's a time where teachers can really focus in on those learning gaps, and they can complete the work and have access to their teachers, as well as their peers. The teacher portion is that it focuses on very specific skill development. And students have, or teachers have access to students in real time, if you will, right then there, during the school day. So, you don't have to do something before school, or do something after school, to make different arrangements. There's time within that day that is built in to support those students. So, it is not just for the 14 students in the flex mod schedule. There are multiple opportunities where students are getting a chance to really get additional assistance, if you will. The next school that I want to look at, and I purposely put these slides in the middle, because I believe that right in the core of Free State and Lawrence High School are two of the most important programs in this entire district. And that's why I didn't want to leave them as an aside. I wanted to put them right there in the middle. First of all, is the College and Career Academy, and I appreciate Dr. DeWitt, who is behind me, being here today. Total number of seniors, 38. Number of seniors on track to graduate, the 22 remaining. And why are we saying 22 remaining? Because there have been 12 early graduates in December, and that is absolutely phenomenal. Number of seniors who are not on track to graduate are four. And of those four students, one of the areas that I want to speak to tonight is the focus of the collaboration. When students are not on track, it doesn't just come down to the individual student. It involves the families. And these are conversations, these are meetings, where they are meeting individually with the students. But the bottom line is, the student and the family member have a voice in what is going on. And that is very, very important to help that student become and remain successful. The next area is the college and career. Total number of seniors, 90 seniors. That includes three juniors who will graduate early. Number of seniors on track to graduate, you see that number right there, 100%. Number of students who are not on track to graduate, zero. So, when it comes time for graduation day, and we're saying, you know, "You have met all the requirements. We're looking forward to seeing that number of 90." The area that I want to speak to, as it relates to Lawrence Virtual School, is the home room, content teacher, counselor, family, student, and collaboration. Once again, we're not doing this in isolation, just with the student. We're involving all the stakeholders to be able to have a seat at the table, but most importantly, to be able to offer input to help the student become and remain successful. And I am so excited. I know Susan's out here somewhere. She's out here somewhere. She's walking baby right now. But that's right, she's here. She's present in things with us. So, like I said, those two programs, schools, that meet the needs of our students are at the core of everything that we do. The last school that I want to speak to tonight is Lawrence High School. Total number of seniors is 370. This includes Ctran, as well as Project Search. Number of seniors on track to graduate, 348. Number of seniors who are not on track to graduate, total number is 22. And 15 of those 22 are seriously credit deficient. So, I know that probably there are some conversations and things going on right now, is what types of things can we support you with here at the school, but also, what types of things can you engage in at the academy as well? Seven of the 22 are at risk, but will likely make it, meaning it's going to come down to the wire to have them become and remain successful. The area that I want to speak to on this slide is the school-wide avid professional development. Looking at those WICR strategies, and how that is incorporated throughout the entire school, not just in those AVID classes, not in the five or six AVID classes, but how it is incorporated and ingrained in everything that takes place at the school, that is so absolutely important. So, I applaud the administrators, for being here, but I also applaud the work that is continuing. We've had a couple tough years. And in those tough years, we have been resilient to completely continue to rise to the top. So, I'd like to have Dr. Conrad, if you'll come back just for a second, because I want you to look at, or hear, these numbers, because you may be sitting there thinking, "Oh, my goodness, if we've got 100% here, and we've got, you know, maybe 90% here, what does that equate to in our overall graduation data?" So, talk to about that just for a moment.
So, yeah, these numbers right here, the total number of seniors right here, and then, the total number of seniors on track to graduate, do not factor in the students that we have lost along the way. And so, the graduation number will be lower than this number. This is just that 12th grade class. And so, we've lost students in ninth grade, and 10th grade, and 11th grade. So, we're not capturing this in here. And I just want to make sure that if you're anticipating, "Hey, 100%," we're going to be a little less than that, because there are students we've lost along the way.
Any questions?
Thank you. I have a question for Zach. Zach, so one of the questions I get asked all the time right now is, what happened to all the students that disappeared during the pandemic? Are you finding that we are catching up on answering that question, as we have to try to track down where students have gone when they've left us, for purposes of calculating the graduation rate data? I know that we have some obligation to kind of try to find those students and then report them, so they don't count against us in our graduation rate data.
Yeah, so we, every year, we have students that don't come back to us, and we attempt to track them down. And actually, if a building administrator would like to speak to this more, feel free, but-
I think I'm just, I'm curious if you're finding it more challenging right now, or if you're finding that you're actually getting more answers to some of those questions about where did our students go? And is there anything surprising in that data, as you're putting it together?
So, we rely on the buildings to do a lot of that tracking down. And so, we follow up with, we get reports to say, "Hey, here's how many students that have this exit code of unknown." And they are attempting to track that down. That's why I was asking if an administrator wanted to speak to that specifically, because we rely heavily on them to be able to track them down and enter that code correctly. And we have one.
I can tell you what we've been working on at LHS. We have our SST teams meet. They go through our list of students, and then our social workers go through that process of looking for those students. If we, if they have not been to school, they make sure that they report them to Child Services to see if we can get home visits. They check all addresses that are available, to see if we can find those students. Some of the things that we found in the process is that students have moved to other areas, but they haven't enrolled in school in those areas. So, there is no exchange of records for us to say where they are, because they're not enrolling where they're at. And so, that's one of the major issues that we found, especially with those juniors and seniors right now. So, we've had several cases where we found them in other places, but they're not still enrolled. So, that's why we still have their records. And so, that's how they end up still being dropouts. So, those are a few cases that we found as well.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions or feedback? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, guys.
Next is the Budget Proposal Update Administrative Study, Dr. Lewis. And I guess Patrick Kelly's on the agenda.
Patrick is setting this up. There's been a tremendous amount of information that we've shared previously during superintendent's report, previous board meetings with the board. So, Patrick's going to walk us through some of the information that was shared, and then, in by sharing the KSB study.
Good evening, Patrick Kelly, Chief Academic Officer. So, I thought I'd start with where all the data, a lot of the data that you're getting is coming from. And that's the superintendent's organizational report, or what you'll hear in education world. In Kansas, we call the SO66. This is a district-level report that aggregates un-audited data. What that means is, districts enter in the data to the report. KSD doesn't come in and check any of this data. Salary information is reported for the superintendent, principals, and teachers, and does not include any other administrators. I included links to the SO66 user guide, if you want to sort of dig in and read more about this and where this data comes from. The Certified Licensed Personnel has this enter-in, reports of district-certified personnel by building type. So, it has district office, high school, middle school, and elementary school. I gave you a quick snapshot here, because I know some of you are just dying to know how we enter in this stuff for state reports. And over on the left is that report there. Sarah Hamlin does a great job. You'll see directors, coordinated supervisors, and specialists can be assigned to central office, elementary, middle, or high schools. Some job titles, like principals and assistant principals, can't be at the district office. They can only be entered in at elementary, middle, or high school.
Patrick, in our district, do we report facilities and operations staff as part of central office in this data?
We typically do not, and that's a perfect segue there, Shannon, to, if a person with, has a- If a person has a certification for a position that does not require it, we don't count it. So for example, on this report, Cindy Frick, our Executive Director of Budget, that doesn't require a certification for her, and she won't show up in that district office number. It would be reported on a non-certified, which is a separate report. When you look at it, one category, I'm going to go back one little bit, is director. You'll see there, I'm sorry, that's so small. It's a big chart. But you'll see the fourth line down, which says directors, no, fifth line down, directors, supervisors. Trying to do it from a distance. All other directors. You see that, the second to last line, all other directors, right? Our number there included all of these job titles in 2020, 21, and 21, 22. It becomes difficult, and you all have had access to some organization charts, to know where to put these different people based on their job titles. So we just wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of all the people that we would put in a specific category. You had asked for some information, and this has been provided for you before, so I was just making sure that you still had it. On salaries, and you can see superintendent salaries, and I gave you the link there to the KSD report on average superintendent salary. You can see the past five years, what the average salary is. You can also see low, median, and high salary across the state. And then we also pulled down some information. And again, this has been shared with you before to see how superintendents across the state compare. All of this is provided for the public on our Budget and Program Evaluation Committee website, and we've linked it there as well. Remember I said that we, the state requires us to report average principal salary and superintendent salary, and so that same information is here for principals. And then how they compare across the state is over on your right. Again, this is on our BPEC website. Also on Kansas Data Central, you can see the percentage of budget that is spent on administration and support. So this is a summary of general supplemental general fund expenditures by function. I think this was shared with you two weeks ago during the Board of Education meeting. We thought it might be helpful to get you links for the three districts that are larger than us and the three districts, the next three districts smaller than us, what their budgets were spent on administration in 2019, 2020, 2021, and what is their 2022 budget, and then what percentage of total budget that is. If you do click on any of those links, it will take you directly to those Budget at a Glance reports in Data Central for that specific district. Go to page six to find that chart there. So if you want to do a little more research and look at different districts.
I think you've already said this, Patrick, but I just for my own understanding and because it comes up quite a bit, the percentage of total budget that you see, taking, for example, Kansas City as at twenty-one percent, but when you look at the previous or one of the previous slides, you'll see that maybe some of their administrators are making less than, say, Blue Valley, which is using fifteen percent of their budget. And there's a number of reasons for that. But does that also factor in to the fact that we are not capturing, we can't really compare apples to apples?
That would be...
And that's going to be, that's a theme through the entire presentation, correct?
Yeah, that would be one interpret, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to glance over my shoulder at Cindy every once. I get a little nervous here when I start going into budget territory. So she has looked at these and said, go forth, Patrick. We also gave you last week the Kansas Open Gov Data Bank and sort of did some cultivating of information for you there. This is just a little snapshot of there. It is available on our BPEC website, and I gave you the link. You can also look at state, county, and city databases for comparison, if that's helpful to you. Just wanted to make sure you had that resource. We gave you the organizational charts for a number of different districts, and those districts that didn't have organizational charts, we tried to provide you a lot of links to some of their different departments so you could sort of make your own organizational chart in your head based on that information. We hope that was helpful. And part of the reason we did these last two is because not everything that's represented on the SO-66 report, we thought you might have more questions and wanted to give you some more resources to do that. So that moves us to our KASB report. Dr. Britton Hart was unable to be here with us this evening. He's the one who put the report together. So we asked him if he would be kind enough to do a video report. He's in Omaha this evening, and so it's a little under ten minutes here, and he'll walk you through the report and just some reactions as he went through that report.
Good evening. I'm Britton Hart. I'm from the Kansas Association School Boards. I appreciate the opportunity to join you this evening online via video. So I apologize I was not able to be there in person, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. So this evening, I've been asked by Lawrence Public Schools to update the 2000...
What's that, Zach? It's kind of soft.
Yeah. He adjusted volume in the back.
...19 administrative staffing comparison. And so want to briefly walk through that staffing comparison for you tonight and just really expose the board and expose the data to you as a board. So you, as you guys continue to have those conversations in Lawrence about the future, the future, excuse me, and what needs to take place to best serve your students, you'll have this data in front of you to be able to do that. So as we start, I want to kind of lay out three outcomes and three overviews of the staffing comparison. The first one is you, we took Lawrence and seventeen other comparable school districts as we put this information together. This information comes from the SO-66, which is the superintendent report. It's done annually. Primary purpose for the SO-66 is really to review enrollment and look at staffing compared to that enrollment across all 286 districts. The second outcome is as you think about this EXO-66 report, this is a statewide report that's supported by KSD. This is accessible to public, anybody that is viewing this tonight. You can go to KSD Data Central. I will tell you, this is a self-reported report by all districts in the state. At some capacity outside of enrollment, it can be un-audited. This is an opportunity where people put in this information, and sometimes when you look at two comparable districts, those numbers don't always have the highest level of accuracy based on when and how the information was put in. Third thing is I hope this data provides the board an opportunity to kind of look through the lens of what? What does need to take place? What does need to happen moving forward to best serve the students in the school district? And then the how part allows the administration and the schools and the teacher, the people that are on the ground doing the work, figure out how to accomplish what the board would like to set out. And so as the board thinks through this data tonight, I would encourage them to look at your goals, look at the values of your school district, and start to really kind of formulate and think about some of those past conversations about what needs to happen moving forward to best serve you, your community, and your students. And then thus allowing the administration and school and employees an opportunity to figure out how to accomplish this goal within your expectation. So let's unpack this first data table. First data table, as I didn't mention, but this study is going to kind of really look at and examine three different areas of staffing. First area is central office certified administration. So anybody that would be a certified administrator in the central office setting. First thing I want to kind of note is that this was based on overall K-12 enrollment. Lawrence Public Schools is the seventh-largest school district in the state. As you can see, there's a lot of, there's a lot of range between the seventh, all the way down to seventeenth, and all the way up to the top. And so use that as an opportunity to compare yourself with districts that are similar size. So in particular today, Topeka, Andover, et cetera. Those people that maybe share some of that same enrollment data. Also, through the same lens, look at that free and reduced enrollment. And so as you can see, as you start to think about Topeka 501, maybe we don't, are closely related to them as we are Derby, for example. And so same way with special education enrollment. As we move farther right on the table, I want you to look at how this is organized. So on the far right side, it says total number of central office admin. And so you can see highlighted there in the middle, Lawrence is at twenty. State average is at eighteen point one. And then as you go right, it takes the total number of admin divided by the enrollment for K-12, free and reduced, and special education. This next table shows that the number of central office admin in comparison to your overall enrollment. And so Lawrence is third out of those eighteen schools, having the fewest number or the largest number of admin serving the fewest number of kids. And so I want you to take that as one piece of data, but I wanted to relate to this next piece when we think about central office and building. And so it's important as you look at this data that this is an opportunity for you to really kind of reflect on current practice. You can reflect on how the SO-66 is reported. But let me give you one example. Let's hone in on central office at the top, building at the bottom. So Topeka has fifteen point six central office admin. Lawrence has twenty. Jump down right below there, though, when you think about building admin. Topeka 501 is sixty-three, and Lawrence at thirty-three. So you can see a wide difference there. So something to think about and process in your conversations is that possibly in Lawrence Public Schools, a lot of those reports, a lot of that work that's being done at the building level in Topeka is being done at the central office in Lawrence and vice versa. Some of that work that is being done in Topeka at the building level is maybe passed down to the building level principals and thus having less staff at the central office in 501. And so as you can see, that comparison with similar-sized school districts, similar-sized enrollment, how each district is drastically different of how they draw up job descriptions, identify titles, and really hand out the work to ensure that the kids are getting their needs met. And so think about that and be cognizant about how that looks as you move forward comparing building level and district level admin as well. This next table, let's drill down a little bit deeper just on the certified building admin. So what I showed earlier, a couple of things that are interesting here is look at the number of school buildings that serve students in your school district. You're right at twenty-one. And then we took the total number of administration, thirty-three, just like it was shown on the slide before. And then we did something a little bit differently here. We did a ratio between not just enrollment, but also building. So number of administrators per building. So you're one of the fewest number of admin per building in this data set, so one point five seven. And then we also, again, took the ratio to enrollment, ratio free and reduce, and also ratio to special education. So this first table in that upright-hand corner would show you that you were seventh overall in the fewest number of admin per building ratio. And so that is a good number. That is a number that says, hey, we are doing great work with the people we have in each building to serve kids. It also may kind of resonate with that table prior that some of the work that we're having our building levels admin doing, some of those things take place at the central office and other districts, just like your district in particular. And so that's a good piece of data to kind of reflect on. This next one is also a comparison, like we said before, of the number of admin based on the number of students. And so as you can see, you're right there in the middle, right where that appropriate average should be. And so I think that really speaks volumes to what you guys have committed to and the responsibilities and the job descriptions that your building-level admin have in each building, which is primarily focused on students, good quality instruction, and support for staff. So this last piece, this last data, we covered central office admin, covered building admin, and this last one is non-certified district-wide. So I always describe these folks, these are the people that keep the doors open. These are the people that keep all your kids safe. They keep your kids fed. These are the people that really, if you have a technology problem, these are the ones that make sure that the functioning of the buildings and the district is at a high level. And so this really is kind of a unique comparison across the state as you think about other districts similar size. The average number of non-certified district-wide that is reported by the SO-66 is right around that three hundred range, three hundred employees. So you can see Lawrence is well below that, but also those people across not just your district, but across the state play such a vital role to ensure the success of your buildings and your students in your district. So as we close tonight, I just want to remind you that I hope this is just one form and one piece of data that will help you as a board have that discussion on what we want to do moving forward and really start to kind of empower and instill into the district and building and teachers, admin, to start to figure out how we're going to accomplish this task. You guys have a hard task ahead of you, and I hope this is one area that, and a piece of data that can help you make some of those decisions. As board members, I would encourage you, if you want to reach out and you have further questions or other pieces of data that you would like to see, I'd be happy to partner with you in your conversation moving forward. Thank you very much, and best wishes.
So I believe that ends our report to you. If you have any questions, I'm sure you can either direct them at Mr. Hart by email or Dr. Hart by email or Dr. Lewis or myself.
I know Dr. Hart's not listening, but I'd like to thank him for all the work he's done on this. I know he had a very quick turnaround, so I appreciate his work putting this together. Any questions or feedback for Patrick?
I have one thing. I just wanted to get your reflection on Patrick and Dr. Lewis. So I thought that the perspective that Dr. Hart provided was very interesting in thinking about how a district is structured and what your philosophy and approach is to doing, to doing the work that has to be done to operate in terms of what duties you have people do at the building level administratively and what duties you have people do in the central office administratively. And I guess I just would like to hear if you have any reflections on that as it relates to our district. Knowing from my experience over the years that our district has tried to become less site-based than it used to be fifteen or twenty years ago in terms of standardizing a lot of things across buildings so that our students have access to similar educational experiences no matter where they are in our district. Do you think that that philosophy is reflected in the data in terms of the administrative data in our district?
The philosophy of moving from site-based...
Being more, being less, being less site-based management versus... It's kind of that conversation around tight and loose. There are things that you, that you control more tightly from the central office versus things that you, decisions that you let buildings make on their own. And, you know, I've heard people say about our district over the years that we have become less site-based than we used to be. So I guess I'm just trying to put this data into context in terms of the management philosophy that has been prevalent in our district over the last many years, at least I've been on the board.
And I would just reflect on just my time here in the district. If you recall, when we were doing the strategic planning process, there was a graphic that I showed that had, in one box, arrows were going different ways, and then the next box, all arrows were going in the same direction. That was that alignment that we were looking for as a result of the Listening Learning Tour and understanding that we had some independent contractors in some classrooms and was more site-based. We were trying to align that. And so when we look at the development of the strategic plan and the implementation of that, now we began to put together the team to make sure that that could happen. And so with that team, that's the support of our buildings. You know, again, this building used to be called the E S D C. I believe we removed that D. But maybe, we wanted to focus on that S, that support, and making sure that district staff provide that support to continue those arrows going all in the same direction.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or feedback for Dr. Lewis or Patrick? None? Okay. Thank you. Excuse me. Next is the recess to executive session. So I'll make the motion, please.
Erica, can I request that we try to do it in twenty minutes?
I can't hear you.
May I request that we amend the motion to twenty minutes to see if we can get it done, or do you want to continue with the thirty?
Let me explain.
Okay, thank you. I'll make motion.
Okay.
I move to recess to executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters on non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed with Dr. Anthony Lewis invited to be present and with the board to return to open session in this room at nine thirty-eight, right? With no action to follow.
Shannon, a second. Emerson?
Aye.
Jones?
Yes.
Moosebaum?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kim...
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Kimble?
Yes.
Cadu Blackwood?
Yes.
We are returning to open session with no action to follow. Dr. Lewis, any closing announcements?
Just a reminder that I didn't include in my report earlier, but we don't have another meeting prior to spring break, so this is a reminder, spring break is March 14 through 18. Our next scheduled board meeting is March 28. However, as I indicated on the timeline, there may be a need for a special board meeting on either March 21st or 23rd as we begin to talk about the budget reduction.
Thank you. You have a motion to adjourn?
This is KI, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
This is Carol, I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion carried. Thanks.